Now in session. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We want you to feel welcome. We wish we had a bigger facility. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to join with us. We've got a few seats here on the front row for brave souls who would like to come and sit in the front. The City Council has just finished a fascinating work session with the South Davis Sura District Representatives about a food-to-waste project that you'll all be hearing about in coming years, and we appreciate your patience while we have finished that. We'll note for the record that all members of the City Council are here. Our city manager was fortunate, a couple of years ago he planned a vacation and it coincided with this meeting, so he was really lucky to get out of it tonight. But we have one of our managers, Jake Smith, here to help us and our city attorney, and we appreciate you joining us. We will start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead, after which we'll invite Councilman George McEwen to provide us with a prayer or a thought. So if you will please rise and join with me. I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, for the thought, I'd like to talk a moment about the concept of a false-flag operation. Let me illustrate from a case in history. For a moment, let's turn back the clock to August 31st of 1939 in Germany. On that fateful night, a series of covert military operations took place that would later be collectively called Operation Himmler. German SS troops dressed in the uniforms of Polish military staged several false attacks against high-profile targets along the shared border between Germany and Poland. The most well-known of these attacks was the seizing of the radio station at Gleywitz. Once the station was seized by these fake Polish troops, anti-German messages were broadcast seriously frightening the German citizens. At a prearranged time, after these messages went out, other German forces arrived to liberate the station, killing the fleeing Polish military, who were in reality concentration camp victims supplied by the SS. The next day, under the pretext that Germany had been attacked, Hitler had ordered the invasion of Poland, starting World War II. A false-flag is an ideological weapon which is the sole purpose of controlling a population by fear of a manufactured enemy. Not all false flags involve the fate of nations. Most often, they're employed to slander an individual or a specific group with the end goal of removing them from the social and political discourse. For example, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was targeted by the FBI under a covert program called Co-Intel Pro, which had the goal of discrediting him publicly. Just think how diminished we'd be as a nation if Dr. King had been successfully silenced under such a false flag. Unfortunately, in our world today, the use of false flags is not restricted to the purview of governments. Deliberate misinformation created in tweets, emails, Facebook postings, go viral almost every day, and in their aftermath, they destroy lives and civil discourse. That's why conspiracy theories bound on almost every topic imaginable, and I'm willing to bet that some of you have heard something about the current City Council. By design, secret combinations are not always easy to discern, but in many cases, a false-flag offers up a common theme. They are designed to shock you into fear, anger, and mistrust of others. The net goal of engendering these emotions is to manipulate your support for social, political objectives. The real-world impact of these underhanded deeds beyond the hope for social, political change is the creation of contention, hate, and division in communities. My goal in presenting this thought is simple: Civil discourse disappears in an atmosphere of fear, trust, and anger. Tonight, as we hold this hearing on the public space plan for the South Main Street corridor, I would ask you to look inward and examine how you feel right now. If you are angry or upset by something you read or heard over bike lanes and are ready to give those idiots on the City Council a piece of your mind, I want you to know that you've been the victim of a false-flag operation. On June 7th of 2016, the Council approved and instructed city staff to work with UDOT to provide informal bike lane striping on Main Street, which has accomplished on the north end of town. So there's no great opposition to bike lanes in Centerville, as false-flag perpetrators would have you believe. In fact, it's quite the opposite.
George.
The primary concern...
Just get to the point, Paul.
Okay.
Okay? We have to tie it up.
Please.
Okay.
The primary concern of the Council is how to keep our roads safe for everyone. You'll see that concern in the video recordings of the past meetings and here tonight. Regardless of what motivated you to come here tonight, we are truly grateful that you are here. This Council requested a public hearing because your voice matters, and we want to hear you. Likewise, we are thankful for all the citizens' comments who have been emailed in because we have heard you. This meeting is also the largest target of any streaming event we've had. I think we have more than two users watching, so that's a good thing. Decisions which we will make that impact our community for the next generation require thoughtful deliberations. My fondest hope is that together we can arrive at a solution which benefits everyone in Centerville without placing undue burdens on impacted property owners and the community as a whole. In closing, because of passionate advocacy on all sides of the Main Street issues, there will likely be extremes of opinions offered up tonight. I would ask everyone to remember that the goal is to improve our community. May we channel our energies, our comments, and our thoughts tonight towards that goal and away from anger, fear, and distrust. That said, if my hair... If my chair had a seatbelt, I'd put it on because it sounds like it's going to be a rough ride.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the open session. Typically, at each council meeting, we start with an open session to give those who come to our City Council meetings, which typically is not as many as we have tonight, an opportunity to express their opinion on any manner of municipal concern. I suspect that the majority of you are here to talk about the public hearing on the South Main Street public space plan, or some are here to talk about bike lanes, which we can address as part of that discussion. If you are here to talk about those, we will be holding a public hearing shortly on that as one of the first items on our agenda, so I would ask you not to speak during the open session. If there is somebody else who has a short comment that they would like to make on another manner of municipal concern, I will open the open session and invite you to come to the podium to state very quickly your area of concern, stating your... Please state your name and city of residence for the record. The open session is now open.
Dale McIntyre, Centerville. I was very pleased when the City Council voted to have video of the City Council meetings, but I've been disappointed when we were not able to see what was happening. The live streaming did not happen. Is there anything in place which will ensure that those of us who stay home deliberately to watch City Council will indeed be able to watch City Council?
Thank you. We have had some challenges with our streaming. It's not perfect. It's not required by law, but we try to provide it as a service, and we try to do the best possible understanding of their technical glitches and personal user errors at times.
Before I begin, I'm having difficulty hearing when I'm sitting, and I have a feeling that that's probably shared. Is there a way you can turn up the microphone so that everyone can hear?
We've asked the City Council to allocate some more funds for that. Maybe this will help them open that checkbook a little bit wider and finish some plans that we have to improve the acoustics in here. If you'd state your name for the record, please.
If I could just wait a minute until the microphone's turned up, so everybody can hear. Can everyone hear me now? Well, okay, good. Thank you. My name is Lawrence Wright. I live at 1452 North Cherry Lane here in Centerville, and as many of you know, I served eight years on the City Council. So with that, I'd like to put that as a qualifier to what I hope you'll consider as you listen to the comments that I'm about to make. I'd like to thank the Council for taking the bike trails and the overpass on Parish Lane seriously. Chief Child, in his comments, agreed during that last council meeting that the position that the Council was taking underscored just how seriously this issue is on safety for both pedestrians as well as cyclists, and the Council was very good at taking that seriously. I've had the opportunity to listen twice to the council meetings, to that council meeting where this was discussed at some length, and the level of discussion showed just how seriously the Council does take this issue, something that eluded KSL radio. Clearly, KSL radio doesn't know what they were talking about, and likewise, like other media outlets, they tend to try to generate controversy rather than look at the total context of what was going on. A two-second soundbite tried to characterize the Council and their lack of desire to address this issue over an hour meeting, which didn't make any sense. I want to commend the four council members who participated in the discussion for tabling the issue pending a continued dialogue with the Trails Committee. It was clear to me that there is a safety problem that needed to be addressed. The Parish Lane overpass will require pedestrians to be vigilant and competing with the physics not only associated between car and bicy... I'm a little concerned about this issue. This is not about personal agendas. It's about what is right for our community actions. My final point: I would like to thank the four council members for the professional way in which they approached this issue. Councilman Ins made an off-the-cuff remark that expressed some of the frustration he felt on the issue. Anyone who knows Bill knows that he is a man of integrity, and we are fortunate to have him on the Council. So thank you, Bill, and thank you, Council, for representing our community on the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I wasn't clear before, we'd like those who speak to keep their comments to two minutes or less.
Okay. Well, my wife would be here, so I'm going to take her comments. So I'm going to take...
And is this related only to an area of municipal concern, not related to bike lanes or Main Street?
This is related a little bit to bike lanes.
Okay. Would you please hold that until we have the hearing on the South Main Street corridor plan?
Which is when?
Which is the next item on our agenda.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Kyle Green, Centerville City. 433 East, for anybody who really wants to egg my house. A couple of quick thoughts, just not relating to any of the above-mentioned ideas.
Thank you.
The first one, while we've got a huge population in here, I'm going to take some personal latitude and ask that the Council reconsider the property at the top of 100 South, the debris basin, and actually make some movement to try to prevent that from becoming homes. After watching the news and seeing the 100-year flood back east that dropped six inches of water in under two hours that flooded out a historic district, I think it would be unwise to eliminate prevention methods that we already have in our city to guard against those type of incidents. The second one, the deer population is still an issue. I'd like to know when those permits will be issued again for harvesting, as my tomatoes will not be being harvested this year again for the third year running. And the rest of this is all for the other session, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, and a special thank you to all the council members for being here on an important evening.
Thank you, Kyle. If there's no one else, I will close the... Somebody else would like to speak on another issue, we'll permit that and then move forward.
Hi, my name is Breida Johnson. I live on Williams Lane. Hi, I've been in here a lot. I was traveling for work, and I missed the meeting where the language was discussed about... That was proposed by staff to go through, you know, the requirements for passive versus active space.
Yes.
Is that going to be... I watched the agenda and read on it. Is it going to be re-discussed with alternate language? I sent an email and nobody responded.
You were kind to send a very detailed email on that. Thank you very much. If you can get two of the council members to agree to put that back on the agenda, I'm happy to put it back on the agenda for a future meeting. I think it would be probably most helpful if you came up with some suggested wording that's different than maybe what was proposed, if you want that to be addressed again.
Absolutely.
I'm glad to put it on the agenda.
I'd be happy to. Excellent.
Okay. So if... Before we put it on the agenda, if you would meet... I'm happy to meet with you and Cory and work... We'll have Lisa there for sure, if you have some suggested wording.
Absolutely.
So that we don't address exactly the same thing.
Yep. Thank you so much.
My name is Jason Smith. I live in Centerville on 100 South, and I just wanted to... I have a concern about the lack of sidewalks on my street. 100 South is an extremely busy street with people riding motorcycles and mountain bikes and side-by-sides, four-wheelers, and there's just really no place to walk. So I just would... I'm just concerned about that, if I could have someone address that.
Thank you. We will be having a work session later this month with our Public Works and an intern who's been doing inventory of sidewalk repairs and sidewalk issues. We'll be discussing that later this month.
Can we get his name again?
Jason Smith.
And your address?
530 East 100 South.
If anyone... If you get any property damage, it's Robin. I'm going to go ahead and close the open session and move to our agenda. What I would recommend to the Council is that we move the minutes review and acceptance under miscellaneous business later in the agenda and handle it then. Since we have such a large crowd, I'd like to move directly to the public hearing on the South Main Street corridor, if that's acceptable to the Council.
No objection.
The way I'd like to handle this is, first, before we open... First of all, I want to say thank you for coming. We want to hear your comments. In addition to hearing public comments at the microphone, we've also put some public comment forms out in the lobby, and we always welcome your comments sent to citycouncil@centervilleut.com as well. Before we open the public hearing, as customary for all of our issues, we'll have a short staff report to remind us of staff's perspective on the issue. Then we'll have our planning commissioner, Commission Chair, Mr. Dave Hershey, has agreed to come and communicate a report from the Planning Commission, who's been studying this issue for the past six months. And then I would like to... I'll have a couple of comments before we... Reminders before we start the public hearing. As a reminder, the... A vote is not scheduled to be taken on this issue. The purpose of meeting tonight is to hear public comment. So the decision... A final decision will not be made tonight, but the Council, after listening to public comment, may direct staff to go back and prepare an ordinance, specific language or specific issue to be voted on at a future meeting. But I wanted to be clear that that's the process we'll be following. So with that, Cory, I'll invite you first to give your quick staff report, and then we'll invite Chairman Hershey to communicate his perspective from the Planning Commission on the South Main Street corridor public...
Thank you, Mayor. This is a Zone Text Amendment regarding the South Main Street Plan. As many of you are aware, last November in 2015, the City made an addition to the South Main Street corridor plan, and that was adopting a public space plan. The public space plan is the area from basically property line through the travel lanes to the opposite side of the road and to the other property line, and to try to address those matters. Some of the things that did spill over to the private landscaping areas along the street frontage and talking about some design elements in there, in those locations, I mean. So the City adopted that in November of 2015. In January of 2016, the Council gave a directive to staff and the Planning Commission to go back and take a look at a few elements of that plan. If I recall, the elements of those plan, there was a question about the use of planter boxes within the furnishing zone or the park strip that you would talk about, also the use of grasses within that zone, the taller ornamental grasses within that zone, and to consider eliminating those and putting those potentially into the landscaping of the front yard area. The other element that I believe was changed was also to take the street lamps, the decorative street lamps, and look at moving those back to the first 10 feet of landscaping. And so that directive occurred in January. We presented then, I think in February, to the Commission the start of that process and describing what they were asked to look at. The Commission, that evening, decided that they wanted to look at it with some systematic elements to be reviewed, to respond to some of the comments in the minutes and to those elements that were to be changed. So just in brief, they received a legal analysis from our city attorney in a private and confidential memorandum to talk about city liabilities with things that are located in the public right-of-way. The other thing they wanted to look at was other entity, other city experiences in maintaining those features, so they considered that. They wanted to look particularly at the history of... There was a transition when the Planning Commission in 2015 was wrapping up their narrative version of the public space plan. At the same... As that was wrapping up, the Council had already hired a landscape architect to put together some design details, some visuals, and specific material elements. That was not, at the time, reviewed by the Planning Commission, so they wanted to look at that, the history of that, what was presented, and we provided that information to them. The Commission also sought any potential alternative designs, keeping the same elements, but looking at the tall grasses or some other plantings. We sought from the landscape architect that originally prepared that. He provided some alternative lists of plantings that could be used. They also wanted to look at public safety issues. That was brought up. How does this affect public safety and traffic calming? Our police chief was involved in looking at the site triangles, providing some data on that. There was not specific coming out of the police department about traffic calming. Traffic calming is really an engineering-related issue, and the police chief did not respond to traffic calming techniques in the response. There was also a request to look at the number of accidents and tickets. Police chief provided that to them, and they considered those types of incidences along the Main Street area. UDOT had a question about speed data and violations, and our database didn't break out at the time, specific violations on Main Street, just the accident reporting. But they looked at the UDOT standards for speed changes and had a discussion with that, received from our city engineer also a copy of UDOT standards of how they measure speed. The other thing that they wanted to do is they invited the Trails Committee and the Parks and Rec Committees on a separate night to talk to them about some of their goals, what they see involvement in Trails Port, and then they conducted... They wanted some more extensive review from UDOT's response, since Main Street is a UDOT-owned and operated road, and also they wanted some feedback from the Wasatch Front Regional Council, who coordinate with the regional council, and they had a discussion with them. They considered, over the next few meetings from that time period until fairly recent, a number of these issues they debated. There wasn't a... If you recall, I think it's a five-to-two vote on the plan. Their vote was to keep the plan as is, in a five-to-two. There was dissenting, and they wanted to make an additional addition. So they're recommending that the public space plan be amended to add in some bike lane component south of Parish Lane. And they gave you a memo on that prior to their recommendation, basically outlining some of the information they heard from their UDOT director. And so they want to make an amendment to that. Eventually, they came up with their findings. You met with them in a work session to have a discussion with them, listening to those who voted for it, also listening to the two commissioners that voted against it and their reasonings and wherefore. So tonight is your process. It's your process now to take that recommendation from the Planning Commission. We have our Planning Commission's Chair here, Dave Hershey, to officially represent that recommendation of the Commission to you, and then you can now take it to the public hearing process and then extend it, as you indicated, further at a later date for debate and decision. So that concludes my report to that. Unless you have specific questions or later questions, I'll be available. Chair Hershey now can address you with the Commission's recommendation.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it to Commission Chair Hershey for his transmittal report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Cory. I will try not to duplicate some of the things that Cory has said tonight, but I would like to present perhaps a little bit more flesh to the skeletal outline that he's given you.
And Chairman Hershey, if you could make sure you speak directly into that.
Sure.
It's a little hard to hear in the back and outside.
And I will... I'll do my best.
Speak loudly, please. Thank you.
For years, there's been discussion by both the City Council and the Planning Commission about the implementation of the general plan adopted... Where the South Main Street corridor plan was adopted, as mentioned, this is property or this is part of the street that runs from Parish Lane to Page's Lane. This general plan, and many of you may not know this, but this general plan was adopted clear back in December of 2007, but no formal action has been taken on the general plan to speak of until fairly recently, within the last seven or eight months. It's important to understand the vision for South Main Street and the public space plan that's recited in the general plan, and I think it's important, as we... As you consider your comments tonight and as the City Council considers this matter, what that general plan says. First of all, the general plan points out that Main Street is a major entrance to Centerville City, and such an entrance is important to the overall appearance and atmosphere of the city. The context for this portion of the general plan is as follows, and I quote, "Growth and revitalization efforts or strategies ought to encourage infill and redevelopment in balance with the community's desire to highlight Centerville's Main Street. The South Main Street corridor can and will thrive if included in the design framework of this area..." "If included in the design framework of this area is a scheme that provides various alternatives to purely an automobile-oriented street. Pedestrian-friendly amenities, alternative forms of transportation, proper architectural and building designs, and other similar concepts need to be considered in designing the South Main Street corridor district. Redevelopment and enhancements need to focus on such concepts to create a stronger, more vibrant Main Street environment." End quote. This is really the mission statement that was before the Planning Commission, when we started looking at the implementation of the public space plan for the South Main Street corridor district. Included in that were several goals that are set out in the general plan, and there were about 10 of these goals that are relevant to what the Planning Commission did in its consideration of the public space plan. Number one was to protect and increase the safety of motorists and pedestrians. Number two, work with Utah Department of Transportation to provide additional crosswalks and pedestrian safety features across Main Street. Number three, advocate for wider sidewalks throughout the corridor when road cross-section improvements are being considered, and an emphasis should be placed on identifying safe routes to school and within the traditional Main Street commercial district. Number four, consider and evaluate the effects of road cross-section improvements on traffic flow, aesthetics, and the safety of motorists and pedestrians. Improvements may include striped bike lanes, planted medians, raised intersections, bulbous and chokes, pavement treatment, and sidewalk improvements. Number five, ensure that the pavement treatments do not hinder access to those who have limited physical mobility and wheelchair... And who are wheelchair-bound. Number six, allow for bike routes that are part of the roadway to provide opportunities for bike lanes along Main Street and on surrounding neighborhood streets that connect to Main Street. Bike lanes and routes create a designated space for bikers and reduce the conflict between pedestrians and bicyclists on the sidewalk. Number seven, develop and implement coordinated standard for... Number seven, develop and implement coordinated standard for streetscape improvements along the entire South Main Street corridor. Improvements should include street lighting, landscaping, streets furnishings, signage, and other such amenities. These improvements could take place through a city-initiated assessment or be coordinated with Utah Department of Transportation. Number eight, connect Main Street visually to adjacent neighborhoods and regional commercial areas through streetscape design elements such as landscaping, furnishings, lighting, et cetera. Number nine, connect Main Street physically to adjacent neighborhoods and regional commercial areas through the use of new trails, bike routes, and established pedestrian routes, including sidewalks or pathways. And finally, number 10, establish landscaping requirements to create a distinctive gateway which can also be in the form of hardscaping. So with this mission statement and these goals in mind, the planning commission undertook some forward-thinking planning as to what we'd really like to have our Main Street look like and which could be developed in a way that would encourage future improvements and developments along Main Street. Last fall, the city council requested that the planning commission review these general plan mission, the general plan mission statement and goals and prepare specific measures to implement that plan. As Corey pointed out, there were several meetings held and several things discussed over the course of, well, basically since last September, both at the planning commission and at the city council. The city council did approve the South Main Street corridor plan as proposed and portions of the public space plan, which we sometimes refer to basically as the street plan, but did refer back to the planning commission, the street plan or the public space plan for consideration of some modifications that they had recommended to us. We took a real hard look at those recommendations from the city council, and we determined as a commission that we should do some additional research. And as Corey has pointed out, this research included talking to the landscape architect, dealing with public safety and traffic calming concerns, the accidents and ticketing along Main Street to see what was really happening out there, working with UDOT to determine how they determine speed and the speed data along Main Street, and also the UDOT speed limit change process. Based on these inquiries, the planning commission continued to hold public hearings on this matter, and we had several evenings where public hearings were open. Not too many people appeared, but we did receive a lot of public written response to the plan, which was helpful. On March 9th, as was mentioned, we had meetings with Parks and Recreation and the Trails Committee where we talked about Main Street and the corridor and bike trails and other things that the Trails Committee specifically had in mind for Main Street. The Trails Committee, among other things, recommended enhanced sidewalks and bike lanes for the Main Street area. As was also mentioned, we had asked our city attorney, Ms. Romney, to provide us with information regarding liabilities and safety concerns because that was one of the issues presented to us by the city council, and we were able to review that memorandum as well. On May 11th, the planning commission invited representatives from, excuse me, UDOT and the Wasatch Front Regional Council to meet with in a work session. That probably among the things that we looked at as a planning commission was the most interesting and probably informative time that we've had in looking at the facts presented to us. At that meeting, even though we'd been told previously that it was unlikely that UDOT would be very cooperative in planning and designing improvements to Main Street, we found that the opposite was true and that UDOT, in fact, was not opposed to what we had been proposing and gave us some insight as to what could be done. Similarly, the Wasatch Front Regional Council gave us encouragement toward some proactive planning along Main Street. There were five or six points that came out of that meeting, which I think are important for the council to understand as well as the public. First, that as is expressed in the general plan, the Main Street corridor is considered a major corridor and an important entrance to the city. Number two, the Main Street is part of the Complete Streets Program envisioned by the Wasatch Regional Council as well as Davis County. Number three, Main Street is a priority bicycle route. Number four, there are several other project corridors that have successfully undergone substantial improvement and beautification to enhance the major goals of walkability, multi-use, transportation, human scale, imageability, and complexity. Those are kind of key words in planning, and they have to do with what makes you feel most comfortable as you're walking down a city street. These cities that have undergone these projects, all of which are on major highways, UDOT-controlled or US transportation-controlled highways, are Logan, Brigham City, Cedar City, Farmington, and Ogden. These are the ones that were presented to us by UDOT as examples. And if any of you have seen some of the improvements that have been made along those major corridors, you kind of understand where we were coming from as a planning commission. UDOT did not oppose beautification so long as the street lamps and street furniture used breakaway features and that sightlines at intersections were not compromised. These types of features may actually increase safety, we were told by UDOT. UDOT is willing to reduce the size of the traffic lanes in order to allow for three- or four-foot striped bike lanes along South Main Street. And finally, the UDOT will allow planter boxes provided that the vegetation is not so high as to block the visual, the motorist's ability to visualize what's going on around them. So with these factors in mind, the planning commission continued to hold public hearings and to develop and debate a recommendation to the city council. On July 13th, 2016, the planning commission, as was mentioned, on a five to two vote, recommended to the city council the adoption of the street plan as originally proposed by the planning commission with two relatively minor exceptions. One, that the street trees be moved to private property, which I think was also in one of our original proposals to the city council. But that all of the other improvements, the wider sidewalks, the street lights, the planter boxes, and the street furniture be placed within the public easement and maintained by the city. And then the second change that we are recommending to the city council was that we work with UDOT to re-stripe Main Street in a manner to provide for 11-foot vehicle and middle lanes and a four-to-five-foot bike lane depending on the area. Main Street is not equal in all areas, as you probably know. So there are differences there, but that the bike lanes be striped in at the edges of the road. This recommendation and resolution was presented to the city council at a work session held on July 19th. During the work session, our reasoning for our recommendation was presented to the city council. We answered questions, gave our reasoning, and those commissioners who opposed the resolution were also given the opportunity to speak. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Any questions of our planning commission chair before we?
Yes, I do have one question. First off, before I ask my question, I just want to make sure that the public knows that the planning commission, our fellow residents, they have the most thankless job in the entire city. They don't even have the visibility that the city council does unless it's a situation like this. So thank you very much for the efforts. We do appreciate that. My question regarding the public space plan is, how many of the actual property owners or impacted businesses were solicited directly for their input as to the impacts on their properties?
Well, I can honestly say that other than what we heard at the public hearing, which was very little from those property owners, we did not receive much input. However, the focus was on developing these improvements in the public easement rather than on private property. The only thing that would go on the private property in our recommendation would be the trees, which would be planted by and maintained by the city.
Thank you.
I have one question, actually. Commissioner Chair Hershey, would you recall, as I recall, that towards the end of that meeting, the commission extended an invitation to the council to continue discussion so that we can make changes and get feedback from both bodies as those efforts are made?
Oh, absolutely. This is a recommendation only, and certainly the commission would be happy to work with the council on any changes that the council feels is necessary. Obviously, the council is, it needs to be responsive to the public input as well as deal with budgetary issues and safety issues and those types of things, which we looked at, but not like you will be looking at those things, so.
Other questions before we?
I guess one other thing is that although everything with the trees is in the public space, the size of the public space is significantly increased in the plan, unless I misunderstand it. Is that not correct? In other words, it's widened. We go from a four-foot and a four-foot sidewalk to four, six, and eight inside of that.
In some areas, there may have to be some expansion, but those details are yet to be worked out as to what portion of any public space or any private space would be involved with that.
I have a question, but with the property owners, even if we do or don't have to take their property, aren't they expected to pay for the improvements at the time they go in?
The planning commission did not make a recommendation on that, although these improvements would be going into the public easement, so we anticipated that they would be primarily paid for, if not totally paid for, by the public.
Any other questions before we move on? Before we start the public hearing, I wanted to make a couple of comments about that. And Jake, I'd ask you to put up that, the one slide. People ask, what is the public space plan? Typically, public space refers to the area back of curb to the beginning of the building, and that's basically what the planning commission studied. Some of that is on private land and some is in a public area. Why do we have these standards? We have different standards for different areas of the cities. If you look at our industrial park, we require almost no landscaping. We don't require sidewalks. We don't, very minimal requirements. In other areas, such as along 400 West and Parish Lane, in our Parish Lane gateway, we have very, what some might call very strict landscaping and public space requirements. We require new developing properties to put in decorative lighting, wider sidewalks, berms, and very nice landscaping that's maintained, nice trees. The question that we are struggling with, or what the council and planning commission have been working on, is what should the requirements be for Main Street? It's appropriate for, to have design standards, but what should those design standards be? And how do we, how do we put that in place in a way that respects the public's desire for beautification and private property owners' rights to do what they want on their own property? If we, if we ask each of you, do you want government mandating what you do on your own property? You're going to say no. I'm going to say no. Nobody likes government mandates. If you ask, are you in favor of beautification in Centerville? Everyone will say yes. We're all in favor of beautification. As you provide your comments tonight, it would be most helpful if you could provide feedback on specific items in the plan. And I, in my view, the plan that's in place today has these elements. Wider sidewalks. So as you share your comments, we'd love to hear, are you in favor of that or think it's unnecessary? A park strip on both sides of Main Street, this is only in the commercial areas. Currently, we have a park strip only on one side, only on the east side of Main Street. There is no park strip most of the way on the west side. Periodic hardscape materials. You can see that in some of the drawings of enhanced pavers and concrete, things like that. Decorative elements like planter boxes and benches. Are you, do you think that's worth putting in place? And if so, who should maintain those? Should it be the city? If it's on the public part, I think most people agree it should be the city. If it's on a private part, that's, we'd love your feedback on that. Decorative pedestrian lighting. Think of the black decorative lighting that's on Parish Lane and 400 West. And also enhanced landscaping behind the sidewalk. Trees, shrub, beautification in that. Are those the elements, those are the elements that are in the plan that was studied. The planning commission has recommended some additional things. Let's move the trees back. Let's add bike lanes, which technically are not part of the public space plan today, but our Trails Committee has done a great job working on ideas, and the city council is meeting with them and considering that. So as you provide your comments today, I'd encourage you to try to be as specific as possible on what is the elements that you view as positive and appropriate and what elements maybe are not appropriate. Because the city council, instead of a yes, no, well, they have to do the hard decisions together with the planning commission of saying, okay, what are the details? What's included and what's not? So I just wanted to share that and make sure everyone understood what we were talking about in terms of the layout. Before we go to the, open the public hearing.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Because we're.
And I'll invite staff to come up if there are any questions for staff.
Chairman Hershey said that they assumed that the public would be, that the public would be paying for this. Is the plan that is in place right now, isn't the property owners going to be, doesn't not read now that that's who will be paying for it, is the property owner?
My understanding, and I'll ask staff to clarify, is the plan, the ordinance that was passed in 2015 says the responsibility to put these improvements in lies with the developer of the property. They're only required when there is new development or significant redevelopment. A remodel over 30% would trigger complying with new codes. If you like the, if you're a current property owner, there is no mechanism for the city to make you change these things, and there's no intention of that. This is for new development that goes in or properties that are sold and redeveloped into a new use. That is the purpose of this. Will it take a very long time? It would take potentially 50 years.
Your answer was satisfactory enough that Corey's headed back to the seat.
And Corey, one other point of clarification, though, just to be accurate, the number six should say five to 10 feet behind the sidewalk because the property owner, if they choose to redevelop, has the choice of a range of setback.
Your range of setback on your previous edits were 10 to 15. And just for clarification, the trees are already in the development zone in the currently adopted plan in the purple.
Behind the sidewalk.
Right.
Thanks for that clarification. So before we go to the public, any other questions of staff?
Let's hear from the public.
Great.
I have one more little thing that I'd like to make a little disclosure, which might make this meeting go a little bit smoother, I think. There has, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming because I was you, so be really careful because I was you sitting out there not long ago and had no intentions of being here. I almost panicked when they put up the chairs. I thought, I need to save me a chair, and then I thought, oh, I don't have to. So I want you to know, there has been some misinformation. I don't know how it got started or how it came about, but that the city council maybe isn't pro bikers or pro bike lanes. I want you to know that I am very much a pro biker. I am very much for bike lanes. My husband wouldn't let me wear my spandex tonight for fear my news would be here, or I'd be in it. I want you to know that I have heard nothing. Everything that we have voted on that has anything to do with bikes has all gone through. We talked about some grant money in May that we were going to put in and try and get some rest rooms down on the Legacy Trail. I've been on the Transportation Committee for over eight years, which is, you know, looks into the bikes, lanes, the trails. I'm on the Trails Committee right now, and I helped choose where these bike lanes were going to go that were presented to us. There was not anything from the city council saying, we don't want bike lanes. We were concerned about the bike lane going down Parish Lane because we were afraid would that be too dangerous to have a bike lane on Parish Lane? Because it's dangerous to drive your car down Parish Lane. That's what started the bike lane discussion. That was the only bike lane that was not even easily appr- That was the only bike lane that was not even easily approved. We said we'd like to meet with the Trails Committee, because I'm on it, and I'm telling you, they are awesome and so smart, and make me feel so old. And so I said, let's meet with them and see if there's any alternative routes that we could use to get you down to the pedestrian bridge without having to go all the way down Parish Lane, because I wouldn't want my grandchildren going down Parish Lane on their bicycles. So we just wanted to meet with these bikers to see if there was any other alternatives that might be safer. Our police chief was here that night, he encouraged that. He was concerned about bikers on our Main Street. That's the only thing that was talked about. So if you're here and you're sweating the bike lanes, you can take a big sigh of relief. You've already won. We've never and are not against bike lanes.
Robin, can I just ask for a quick clarification?
Uh huh.
My understanding is staff was directed to hold UDOT off on finishing the maintenance striping south of Parish Lane. I, my understanding was that that would have been completed already, is that not correct, staff?
I did not know, I don't believe so. I talked to Steve, and he told me the direction to staff was to work with...
They're waiting on you, the City Council, to say, yes, this is okay.
Right, so, but UDOT's work would have been completed already, but the impression was given that UDOT should wait?
We're not delaying them. They're scheduled, they're scheduled to do it, but they're...
When I talked to Steve yesterday, he told me that he felt like the direction from the council was to work with UDOT to put the bike lanes down Main Street. He thought that was already a given from us.
Good, okay.
So I just want, I want you to know that I provide bikes for all my grandkids at my house, all over my lawn, and I want to hear from everyone, but I do want you to know that you don't have to fight for bike lanes, so that's good news.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Robin. The way I'd like to handle this, how many of you intend to speak tonight? I assume there's quite a few. Given the number of people, what I'd like to do is do this in an orderly fashion. So I'm gonna invite those, first, we'll say, those seated in the first two rows who would like to speak, to speak, so that we don't have large people, large numbers of people just lined up waiting.
That's on the internet. That could be used against you.
That could be...
Please delete those two words. Don't, don't hold them against you.
Thank you. You have the opportunity to ask questions, but in order to move the meeting forward, we will write down your questions, and we will provide answers at the end of the public hearing. Unless it's some, I will reserve the prerogative to, to answer a very quick or blatant, any blatant misinformation, but the intent is to, we will record your questions and answer them at the end of the public hearing. We're, we're going to...
Are these the first two rows, or are these the...
The first two and a half rows. We will ask you to keep your comments to two minutes. I've asked Jake Smith to keep time and let people know with these attractive signs if your, if your time is up, so that we can move this forward. We want to hear from you. You're always welcome to submit additional comments.
Paul, I'm getting signs from out in the foyer that people cannot hear well, so all commenters, please speak very loudly and clearly into the microphone.
Before we start, I'd like to ask our city attorney to read what is in our Centerville Municipal Code about decorum at City Council meetings.
Yes, I'm happy to. We actually have some rules of order in our city code about conducting public meetings, and subsection C talks about civil discourse. I always speak really loudly.
Louder?
Extra loud tonight.
Okay, I won't look at you, then. Remarks and comments made in public meetings of the City Council should be relevant to the matters before the City Council. Speakers should speak in an audible and clear tone, and refrain from attacking City Council members or others in their motives. City Council meetings should be conducted in a courteous manner to promote an atmosphere in which all points of view may be expressed and heard. Council members should not interrupt other members during discussion and debate, and remarks should be addressed through the mayor, who shall allow reasonable opportunity for all points of view to be expressed.
Thank you. What Lisa didn't mention, but frequently does, is we'd ask you to refrain from, from clapping or jeering or making loud comments. We want everyone to feel welcome to share their comments regardless of what their point of view is. We're all neighbors and citizens, whether we have a planter or a, or no planters, we all need to live together and, and get along. So I'd ask you to phrase your comments in a very positive light, and, and be respectful of those who have a different point of view. So with, with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll open, Mark, if you didn't hear me, Mark. We're going to have those seated in the first two and a half rows speak first, and then we'll, we'll move to others. You will have plenty of time. Both of these two microphones are available, so we can go to either side. Thank you for your patience with me, Mark. And please state your, your name and city of residence. We don't necessarily need your address, just want to know where you're a citizen of.
I'm Gary O'Brien. I own O'Brien Glass Products, and also own the property, Gary's Cleaners, and the adjoining lot there. So I own two-thirds of the, of the property between Third and Fourth South. And it's probably the most highly impacted with this proposal, but I wanted on record to say that I have never, never been contacted or talked to about this. The only reason I'm here tonight is because I, this afternoon, I seen some people out in the middle of the street measuring the width of the street. I was out there trying to fix a water line to, to water the grass, and they informed, I asked them what they were doing, and they told me what was happening here, and that they were against it because it was unfair to the property owners, because it was gonna be a direct cost to the property owners. And I said, well, that's me, so I just, like I say, want, want everyone to know that the Planning and Zoning Commission, they didn't get any input, input from the property owners, because nobody was ever notified. You know, when I bought that property from Gary Perkins, he was on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He had Gary's Cleaners. And I asked him why he was on the commission, and he says to protect himself, and I can see why.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
I'm Jeff Lewis. I'm a new resident of Centerville, and just wanted to say, I, I think this is a great city. I actually watched the proceedings before and want to first echo my applause that there is, in the planning, that are going to be bike lanes. That's important to me. And want to thank you for all that you do with the council, and thank you for supporting that. I do want to express my concern that, I actually watched the proceedings before I came to this meeting. And Bill's an old friend of mine, and he is a man of integrity, just like was stated before, but I respectfully disagree with the tone about aggressive cyclists. I am a cyclist. These two little boys here are cyclists. This eleven-year-old is here because he's fulfilling a requirement for the merit badge, and he's wondering why his dad's speaking about this, but I want you to know, I'm concerned about that tone. I'm concerned about the safety of people like me, because the way that was being spoke, the words that were being spoken were, made me feel like I was an aggressive cyclist. And I believe I am, according to that. But I will say this, when I am cycling, I am within the law. And I'm concerned about that. I think that, and I want you to know, I didn't get that off the news. I got it off of watching the proceedings, and I'm concerned about that tone. But thank you for your work on this, and my big thumbs up for having bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lewis. Spencer Summerhaze, 427 South, 75 West, Centerville.
First off, I really appreciate Chairman Hershey's use of the general plan language in setting the context for what is in place, what we hope our Main Street will become. I understand we have existing property owner concerns, but as you've already stated, Mayor, this plan, or whatever comes of this, may take twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years in the making. That's all right by me, and I know it might take that long, but if we want a neat place, a special place, we have a vision that extends beyond tomorrow, next week, next month, or even next year. And so when we think about, and I think it's important for each of us, to visualize or think about the great places in the built environment that we've ever been to. And I would suggest that those places that we love to visit, streets, developments, have great aesthetic features, and are not sterile hardscapes without any appeal to them. So I'm here to express my support for the existing plan as it stands now. I would just make a few points, and I'll, and I'll try and make this brief and somewhat coherent, as I've written some notes down. You know, I'm not here maybe as insinuated by Councilman McEwen, I'm not here because I'm afraid or anything else. I'm here because I hope for the future, and that I'm a little bit disappointed that after all the work that's been put in by the commission, that maybe there are some ideas that, that aren't going to be implemented based off of the general plan, as well as all the professional input that they've received thus far. In terms of bike lanes and safety, I think if we think, even in our own city, you know, I had the, a chance of actually walking the Brooklyn Bridge just a few days ago, and if you think about narrowness across, you know, the Parish Lane overpass, there's a lot tighter places with bike lanes across the country, and I think that as people are respectful of one, one of another, there'll be a good result based off that. But again, I support the existing Main Street public space plan, and hope that we can have a beautiful city, whether it's twenty years from now or forty years from now. I hope the council has vision and won't be dissuaded by, you know, the, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name's, my name's Jason Pitt. I own a business on Third South and Main Street, a dental office there. I've worked there for fifteen years, and my father actually has been there for forty years. And I just, first of all, I want to thank the council for having this public hearing so that we can, they can get some feedback. And that's my purpose here, is to give some feedback. I go to work at seven in the morning, and my office has two massive windows, and I'm here to tell you what I observe the South Corridor being used for. There's three main things that I see the South Corridor being used for at this time. You have joggers in the morning, who jog up and down Main Street. You also have bicyclists who use Main Street as a route to, to ride their bikes. And you have in the afternoon, kids walking home from school. That's what Main Street on the South Corridor is used for. I want to also give feedback on what it's not used for. It is not used for retail shopping. There are no retail stores on the South Corridor. People aren't walking up and down Main Street, sitting on park benches, shopping from one shop to the next shop to the next shop, because it doesn't exist. As I, I am all for beautifying Main Street. I love this city, I love this town, I think it's a great place to live. I've lived here my entire life, and I want it to be beautiful, beautiful. But I also want us to realize there's a difference between a dream and reality. And right now, what the South Corridor is used for is not what is proposed in this plan. I'm also a business owner, and I have a couple issues with the plan. Number one, I also own part of it with O'Briens, the lot just adjacent on the south side. And so it will affect me, affects me right now as a business owner, and it affects me later as possibly developing that land. And so, and I know the gentleman who just spoke wants a beautiful Centerville as well. The reality is, though, it's the business owners who are paying for it right now in the plan. It's the business owners who are maintaining it. And the other question I would have that I'd like to get clarification on is, who is responsible or liable if something happens in front of my business on, say, a park bench? Say, a kid from the junior high is riding his skateboard and jumps up onto the bench and breaks his arm. He can't sue the city, well, he probably could, he'll try. Their parents might, they might come after us. So my, my, my feeling is that it is a great opportunity. I love a lot of this plan, but there are some major issues that we need to relook at, and we need to re, relook at what Centerville, the South Corridor is used for. And it's not a bountiful Main Street. It doesn't have a lot of shops. We don't need places to sit and to enjoy, because there's nothing there to sit and look at.
Thank you. Again, again, I'm gonna ask you to refrain from, from comments or clapping in order to show respect for all points of view. Mr. McIntyre.
Dale McIntyre, Centerville. When Chairman Hershey was speaking, he talked about the general plan, and from that, he took one main point, which is that Main Street is a major entrance to our city. Any of you who drive, or walk, or ride bicycles are probably aware that our major entrance is Parish Lane, not Main Street. And it's not likely to be Main Street any time in my lifetime, because it isn't the place where people go to do things and buy things. That is Parish Lane. And so the purpose that supposedly is being met by this public space plan is a false purpose. What was the date when that description was made of Main Street being a major entrance? When was that placed into the general plan? How far back has that been? Because I don't believe it's an accurate description right now. And it's not going to be unless we provide higher density, which would cause more people to be there, which would attract businesses. And guess what? All of Centerville, well, not all of Centerville, a good part of Centerville has been down here telling the council, we don't want higher density. So the one thing necessary to make this work is something that everyone's supposed to.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Matthew Larson, Centerville. Any planning, long-term planning decision like this ought to be based on what Main Street can become, not what it is today. This is not a decision that should be based on what we see out there today. I think we would all agree that what we see today can certainly be improved on, and that's the purpose of a plan like this. So I speak in, in support of the planning commission's recommendations. I also want to voice support for a publicly funded approach rather than private. The private approach is likely to take decades, and in the meantime, just be a patchwork, and the benefits wouldn't be realized for a long time. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Mario Schroeder. I have a business also on Main Street. I am right next to the fire station. I own a dental laboratory, and a lot of the comments tonight echo clearly to me. I work with the majority of the dentists that are there in the area, and the proposal with sidewalks, I mean with the crosswalks, was very welcoming to me. I have to run across the street to the different doctors across the street, and I feel like the game Frogger when I run across the street. Several years ago, I had a, one of my customers parked right in front of my building, and they had opened the door, got out, and had, was reaching into the back of their vehicle with the door open, to reach in and grab a briefcase out of their vehicle, and a car came and smashed right into the door that was open. So one of my biggest concerns with this walking area that we're talking about is the speed on Main Street is absolutely not conducive to a walking area. There's absolutely no way. Me just walking across the street, I'm pretty athletic, I can get across the street. But I watched them at Maverick, the people that live in the rest home up the street, the Maverick employees literally go and walk the wheelchairs across the street back and forth. The other employee will stop traffic just so they can get the wheelchair. And there's a crosswalk right up the road. I have sat there at the crosswalk, right in front of Kim Samuelson's building, and watched cars blow past that sidewalk, that crosswalk. I don't use it because it's not, it doesn't work. Something as simple as flags, or even a flashing light, would be incredibly effective in a crosswalk. I had the unfortunate experience of watching a woman, an... I had the unfortunate experience of watching a woman, an elderly woman, at the old, by the old Dix Market on Fourth, get run over in a crosswalk, because the lines were not painted that well. I watched her get knocked out of her shoes, and she died in my hands. Because of crosswalk on 400, and that road is much less traveled than Main Street. We are not going to have a walking zone on Main Street if we have a 40 mile an hour speed limit. I love the 40 mile speed limit, I'm, my name's Mario and I drive like him. So I don't mind that, but you have to address it if you think you're going to turn it into a walking area. It just won't happen. I try to walk across the street, I can't. I run. Those are my comments. Also, my building is right on the sidewalk, there's no offset on my building, none. And I'm very concerned that if I were ever to want to putting awning over my building, you know, out on the front there, guess what? The last time we dealt with Centerville on my building, they told us that you had to repaint it. It's when the previous owner was there, my boss Frank. It was the Smurf blue, I don't know if any of you have been here long enough, the building was Papa Smurf blue. They forced us to paint the building, told us they'd reimburse us, it never got reimbursed. So I have my doubts of what's going to happen because of past history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you think property owners should maybe get one more minute than the others?
I've been trying to be pretty lenient.
Thank you. And also, I echo what the O'Brien person, I've never been contacted, ever. I've not had one word until Jason Pitt told me two days ago.
Thank you for the feedback. Is that everyone on the first two rows?
He's been standing, and he's in that.
He's in that range, okay. He gave your check. Kyle, Kyle, we'd love to... We hear from Kyle so often, I just thought he was part of the decor.
I'd like to set a good example, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Kyle Green, Centerville. A couple of quick things. I think that this is a lot like the deer meeting. There was a lot of information sent out, spread out, pushed to the media, whatever. They completely misconstrued what is going on. And I think that, a lot like the deer meeting, a lot of people in here have, their hearts have already settled quite a bit since watching last night's 10 o'clock broadcast. I think it's unfortunate that that's a tactic used to try to drum up interest in a matter or topic, when we could do this simply by an email chain, something a little less crazy that goes out to the citizens, a reverse phone call that says, "Hey, public notice, we're having a public hearing about these type of issues." It seems that the property owners weren't notified. It seems that a majority of the citizens weren't notified unless they were given a reason to be here by somebody else who was up in arms. I think we need to do a better job of publicizing these type of things so that the citizens can actually attend those type of meetings, the planning meetings, the open hearings, and other things of that nature. I would like to point out that the general plan was put into place in 2007. In 2007, there was no Walmart. There was nothing else that has followed since Walmart, or Walmart opened in 2007, I should say. But everything else since Walmart was not there. Parish Lane was not the major bustling area that it was in 2007, it wasn't what it is today. We didn't have strip malls, we didn't have Tony Burgers, we didn't have Little Caesar's, we didn't have the theater on the other side of the freeway. We didn't have any of those things, but now we do. And it's changed the dynamics of our city. Main Street has not been a destination area since Rocket Stop was there for the junior high kids to stop for a beverage. Since then, there's not been a destination stop on Main Street. That was the last time that there was a bustle along that sidewalk to a business, where there was a line of people knocking on a door for candy, okay? So I would say, when you're considering these plans, consider the use. Is it, in fact, for the high, the junior high kids to walk home from school? Is it for one or two joggers in the morning? Or is it going to be that major bustle like it is down on perhaps Fourth West? Maybe it would be a better use of city funds. And my last comment, I know my time is up. I am concerned at the rate of which we spend in our minds and in this city. In the time that I've lived here, two years, my utility bill has gone up almost $25, just from a nickel here, 15 cents there, 20 here. How do you fund a public project without forcing those that you're claiming to serve, those who don't make as much money, by forcing them out of the city by increasing their taxes? So I think you should address those issues as well. How are you going to fund it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, if that's the first two rows, let's invite the next two rows, anyone who would like to speak, to come to the micros, and that would, we can include those in that area on the side.
I think, I think we do need something in the budget, Mayor, to cover.
We'll get some super glue. Yeah, you break it, you bought it.
Privately funded.
We'll accept your donation to the Community Foundation, Larry.
Okay, I think it's working, I'm not sure. I had come on the council in 2008, and we had just gone through, I think, the initial planning for...
Larry, could you state your name?
Oh, my name is Larry Wright.
Because the people on YouTube don't know.
I live in Centerville. I live in Centerville, everyone. We've had many discussions about this Main Street plan. And first of all, I want to thank the Planning Commission, they have done an incredible amount of planning over the last 10 years on this, including consultants coming in and doing that. And I think the planning has really been quite exceptional. They've done everything that the council has asked, and there's been a yo-yo going back and forth on what the council wanted, how they wanted to look at this. But I think the issue that concerned me in our last big vote on this issue, when I was on the council, and that's when we had a lame duck session, and this thing all went through. My concern was that the vision of what this is wasn't clearly defined yet. And there was a big push to try to get this passed before the new council came in. And I remember on the council, and I think Councilwoman Ivy also remembers, we indicated to the council then that really there needed to be more planning time, more discussion on this. We have seen a number of these meetings occur, addressing what really are vision issues. And that vision hasn't been coalesced, hasn't come together. We see a lot of good elements on that, but it hasn't quite come together yet. And I would encourage the council to look not only at the vision of what it is, as Mr. Pitt had mentioned, but also to look at how we're going to fund it. That was another concern that we had, yet it still passed. We didn't have enough time to really look at the funding and assess that. So funding is another issue. We have another big dog in the fight here, and we've got, we're still paying on Utopia. Utopia is going to be paid on for the next, I don't know how many more years, probably another 20 years, it's going to get more and more expensive. We don't have a lot of money. And you've probably seen that in the way our roads are looking, the amount of money we're going to need to spend on sidewalks and other issues. We've got some big infrastructure issues that need to be taken into account. So doing the planning, I think, is good, but we've got to make sure we put in perspective what's in the general plan to what we're really capable of dealing with, and take it incrementally. So those are the only comments I have. Again, thank you, council, and also to the Planning Commission for the work you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Hi, I'm Brian Knox with Centerville. First, I want to admit that I don't look as much like a cyclist as I do a biker. You're not allowed to laugh. I'm an attorney, and it may seem with my comments that I'm representing the business owners along Main Street, I'm not. I actually just saw something, and I'm very concerned with individual liberty. One of my concerns is that at some point, even if it's 20 to 50 years down the road, at some point, these property owners are going to have to bear a financial burden in excess of what they anticipated. And this is because perhaps even the majority of Centerville citizens want the beautification of Main Street. I do, I used to work at Chatterbox Drive-In that used to be Porky's when I was 15 years old. It's always been ugly, I'm sorry. But, but the majority, in saying that a minority of citizens should finance this, Frederick Bastiat, in his 1850 essay on the law, would have called this a legal instrument of plunder. It's, this is, protecting those individual liberty rights is exactly why we have a constitutional republic at both the national and at the state level. And that, the difference between that and a democracy is that a democracy has the ability where the majority can strip the individual liberty rights of the minority. And so I don't feel that that's fair. The other concern I have is that I question whether the council has the actual fundamental right to impose, thank you very much, to impose these additional costs on those property owners. If you've read the essay, "The Proper Role of Government" by Ezra Taft Benson, one of the major themes in that is that elected officials can only act in those positions, in that authority, which the elected, the citizenry has properly delegated to them. And that's only those things that they can do. I cannot go to Mr. Pitt, or Mr. O'Brien, or Mario, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, there you are. I cannot go and demand that they give me a blank check and sign it, and then I go out and I develop Main Street the way I want. And because I cannot do that, I can't give you the authority to do that. So my, my specific suggestion, you asked for specific suggestions, is that those costs that the property owners anticipated when they made the bargain with the city, that that be used as a baseline, and if we're going to do improvements, that they be assessed those costs if you plan on going ahead with this, and that any additional costs on top of that be borne by citizens of Centerville in general in a taxation. I don't want to pay more taxes, but if you open it up to that, we find out whether Centerville really is willing to pay for this, and not just put it on the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knox.
Nancy Smith, Centerville. Thank you for this public hearing. As to the specifics of this plan, yes, I would like to see Main Street improved, but... Can you hear me? I would like to see Main Street beautified and have conformity, but 18 feet in from curb, I think is excessive. And I think it is a taking of property. And I do not think that that is fair and reasonable. I wouldn't want that done to me, and I certainly wouldn't want that done to my neighbors. This literally takes the entire fronts of some of those buildings. Granted, they only have to comply if and when they make a change, but that very concept alone breeds deterioration. And we're not ever going to have a change. So let's be a little bit more realistic and doable in the changes that we can, so that we can create something, some synergy, a lot sooner. Yes, to the bike lanes, we've already discussed that, I think that's a moot point. That is happening, and I'm glad that UDOT will be paying for that, not the property owners. No to the planter boxes and colored concrete to the curb, not because, not even so much because of the cost and the maintenance, although that's a huge issue, but for me, it adds heat, or what I call dead space. What I mean by that is, when I think of open space, I envision green and things that soften the heat, not add to it. So a park strip softens, it cools down the temperature, it allows for access for the utilities that are placed underground, and it allows a place for snow removal. Yes to the benches at the bus stops. That makes sense, but at the expense of UTA, not the property owners. We shouldn't be making this a requirement of property owners, unless you make this a requirement for the entire route, bus route on Main Street from south to north. I think that would be fair. Otherwise, I don't think, I don't understand it, it doesn't make sense to me why we would just do it on the south. I think we have entrance from the south and from the north, and the bus runs both directions. No, I don't need Main Street to be walkable, unless you make it a full, oh, my time is up. However, I'm going to take 10 extra minutes for every one of those muffins I brought. I don't need Main Street to be walkable unless you make it a full extension of Parish Lane and North Main. Without that happening, Main Street going south is just a dead end, at a great expense that goes nowhere. The amenities that we use are not on Main Street. So are you considering the same open space plan for Parish Lane and North Main to provide some continuity and walkability, and if not, why? A good portion of the area on the south end is also just residential. We already have a great walkable community. We have tons of trails, we have people walking up and down the residential streets, not the main arterial streets. No matter what you do to Main Street, it will not be a walkable community. The professionals are very clear on what is required to make a walkable Main Street. Quote, "Walkability focuses on village-scale development. It requires a certain density and mixed use. This density is required to support public transit options, allowing pedestrians to connect to places outside of their communities. While it is important to have uses like a school, grocery store, and public library nearby, these amenities alone do not make an area walkable. Truly walkable communities are characterized by much more than good sidewalks and street crossings." At the expense of density, I do not want a walkable Main Street.
Thank you very much.
I would just also like to say that I watched the entire discussion on Main Street. And I think you guys are doing a great job in your discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Reese, Centerville. I'll make it quick. I do like bike lanes, my husband and I bike. I have, I grew up in Centerville and walked to the junior high and back all the time. And those sidewalks are wide enough, they're perfectly fine. We don't need to go to an expense to widen sidewalks. I have kids in junior high, I'm going to have them in all three, elementary and junior high and high school, and they do just fine on those sidewalks. I don't, I don't know why we would go to that enhancement. Second, I don't think that most people sit on benches just to watch cars go by. I don't. That, to me, doesn't seem like a wise expense. I do like things that look nice, but Centerville is very wanted, people want to live here, it's a community that people come back to. I, me and my husband are here, and he is not from Centerville. And to beautify it is great, but I think that sometimes we are excessive, and the plan is a little excessive in what we're having to do. Ultimately, our retail and our focus should be on Parish Lane and making that the better, because there's just not the retail or the business stores on Main Street that are going to really draw people to walk there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese.
Hi, I'm Bruce Smith. Can you hear me? I didn't, is that better or worse? I think I'll be brief to make up for the time that my wife took in addition to her own time. And I'd really rather talk to you, because you're the ones I'd like to mention a few things. There's a lot of things in my head, there's a lot of things in my heart, but let me just mention just one thing. Several years ago, I decided to spend about three hours doing a service project, it was actually at the Whitercombe Museum, you know, to fix it up, and this was in the beginning days of the Whitercombe Museum, how's that? And I just happened with my shovel to work alongside of Bill Nelson, who some of you may remember was a member of the city council before. And as we were working together, and as we were talking, I began to dream in my mind this wonderful idea as to how to beautify, in a major way, the Whitercombe Museum. It was a pet project I developed in a few minutes in my own mind. And I thought that everybody is going to agree with this, because it's such a wonderful plan that I had in my mind. So I began to share it with Bill Nelson. And he taught me on that day a great lesson that I'll never forget. In essence, what he said was that, "Don't put decorations over functionality." I was ready to gold plate all the sidewalk, because it was so wonderful, but that wasn't functional. And that's what we need, somewhere in that, somewhere in that, is a lesson in this regard as well. We need not decorate this to the extent that it loses its functionality. And we need to use that as a yardstick in that regard. The way our Main Street right now is, actually has withstood the test of time. There are many cities throughout the United States has a similar layout and population that we have, and they have a similar way of having a sidewalk in a Main Street as we do. And it works, it's functional. Yes, there are areas, we can beautify it, make it more beautiful, however, I think for me, the yardstick is to make it neat and comely, and perhaps I'd add another word, simple as well. simple as well. Because in doing so, it will stand the test of time. Now, there are some things that I suppose we could do that would be really, really nice. However, that'd only be really, really nice for about a decade, and then styles would change. And in those future decades, it would be embarrassing, and almost became, be dilapidated. Something that we would say to ourselves, "Why did we ever put that in?" So let's use that as the yardstick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my name is Ronnie Boutte. I'm from Leighton. I'm a visitor through your town. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force. The only flag I'm here under, sir, would be the American flag and the state of Utah's flag. I'm here because your planning commission in 2007, with which Councilman Intz was a member, has put forth a, put forth a plan in front of you that wants to take property, appoint it to themselves. If you're not going to fix the man's deer problem, you're going to have planners that the deer are going to come down to Main Street for. Just saying. Your plan's kind of myopic, I apologize. I'm just an engineer by trade, I don't, I don't do much. But the myopic view of your plan, the same planners and city council are what caused the mess on Parish Lane in the first place. Come off of the freeway onto Parish Lane and try to make a left-hand turn. I'm very concerned about Councilman Intz and Councilman McEwen's tone in this meeting last week, last month, and today, tonight, equating myself and my service with the Nazis, and the tone that they have to impart to their local police, to your local police department for the safety and well-being of people. Obviously, this council has disdain for the true safety of the people and that transport themselves through this city. Planters on the side of the road, think about it, block views of the road of the very bike lane that everybody is touting so well here. I am a cyclist as well, I know I don't look like it. I have a full-time job and I go to school full-time. There's ramifications to what are said in meetings. The ramifications are that when I got hit by the UTA bus just north of here on a narrow shoulder way, that police officer said to me, "You probably should have been closer to the gravel side of the road."
Thank you for your comments.
If I could just interject here, Mayor, just for purposes of decorum, again, this public hearing is for the city council to obtain input, so if the citizens and commenters can please address their comments to the council as opposed to the audience.
Thank you for that reminder.
Well, excellent. Thank you for this meeting, appreciate it, glad that you have opened this up to the public to be able to talk about. I too am a cyclist, I, can you hear me?
What was your name?
Oh, sorry, my name is Bill Erickson. And I am actually a coach for the high school mountain biking teams here in our community for Battlefield Woods Cross in Viewmont, and all the junior high schools that feed into that. The whole purpose and intent of what we do is to provide an opportunity for kids to get outside and to experience a healthy lifestyle. We accept all kids, there's no requirement, and it's just to get kids out and to be healthy. Part of that is riding their bikes in their community. It's not just mountain biking on the hills, we'd rather them get on their bike and be able to ride their bikes over to their friend's house instead of asking mom for a ride, and learning how to get around the community in an alternative way. It's great to hear that you guys are pro-bike lanes, that's excellent. It sounds like things that have gotten said may have been blown out of proportion, but there was something that was said that caused that to happen, and that's what concerns me a little bit, that it's the council's job to kind of set the tone for what this community is. And would love to not have the discussion if we should have a bike lane, the discussion should be, where do we have more bike lanes? How do we have more opportunities for kids and people to get out and ride their bike? So with that said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, Tim Hawks, Centerville. For the record, I am neither angry nor fearful, except when I think about the presidential election, and then I confess I'm a little bit of both. I wanted to thank the council, and certainly the planning commission, for the time and effort that they put into it. And I want to focus on commonality. We had a lot of people come out last year, right? And we have a lot of people coming out tonight, and I think that's actually a great thing, because it means everybody that's here is concerned about their city, they love their city, and they're concerned about its future. Last year, we came out because we were afraid that the wrong plan would undermine what we valued most about the city. And the sense that I'm getting from this meeting tonight and from conversations with neighbors is that a lack of plan, or again, the wrong plan, could undermine those things that we value the most in the city. But there does seem to be some common agreement that we do want to have good public spaces in this town, and we don't want to just abandon Main Street. That seems to be a common theme. As I think about the specifics, and I think about the places that other cities have, you know, the thing that encourages me is a lot of other cities have tackled this and done it well. When you come into the city and you see something definite, it's not often all that much, but it seems that the most important things to me, and I'm a little bit agnostic about some of this stuff, but consistent sidewalks, you know, sidewalk, then no sidewalks, but consistent-looking sidewalks, trees tend to define it. Notice how the old sycamores define all the old Centerville towns, all the old towns in Utah, trees define it as well. And light posts often make a kind of a big thing, where you put the flags up and things like that, we use light poles for that, but that's kind of a consistent thing. Anyway, I think that those themes tend to be the most important, I'm a bit big agnostic on the rest. One thought on your park strips, one thing I can guarantee with 100% certainty is that the cost of water is going to go up dramatically in this state the next little while. So be careful about your park strips, because you might be ripping them back out in a few years, because it costs too much. So if there are other sort of things you can do, I think that's something to consider. I do think it's vitally important that the businesses that are affected are on board with this. I think that an effective public space proposal is something that businesses will support, because it'll improve their property values. And it sounds, based on what we've heard tonight, that there's, we have some more room that we need to do in that regard. So again, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's working on this, I do think there's common ground, I hope that we can come up with a public space plan that we're all proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawks.
Larry Peterson, I live in Centerville, and thank you for giving me a few moments. I moved here 10 years ago, and I'm arguably, probably the most avid cyclist in Centerville. And at that time, when I would get on the road, I was basically the only person. This morning I went out, and by the time I got to Caseville, I collected seven cyclists and counted 22 others. So there are a lot of cyclists that use this corridor through here. My hope is that, as far as cycle bicycle lanes, which I know are in the plan, and I appreciate that, it won't take 10, 15, or 20 years to put those white strips down. They are absolutely critical to keeping us separated from the traffic. Every place where we go, where there is a white strip that separates us from the traffic, we generally have no trouble. You're all familiar with Gentile Lane, they, a couple of years ago, redid that, they put in a bicycle path on the side, then they came back and resurfaced it, chip-sealed it, took the bicycle lane away, and since then, we have cars honking at us, and you don't know where you're at, they don't know where they're supposed to be, and it's just turned that really beautiful road into a mess. So we'd encourage you, if you can, don't wait 15 or 20 years to put the strip down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Brett Hayman, Centerville. The first thing I'd like to do is address just a little bit of a red herring. I would like to note that in the planning commission's hearings, all of those were noticed up. I'm sure that Ms. Romney can provide everybody with a complete list of where all notices for all those hearings were held. I don't believe that it was anything trying to discourage people, hide it from people, but people need to be aware of their own surroundings and their own, and be aware so they can come and speak at those hearings and give their inputs. The other thing I'll say, none of these are perfect, none of these are set in stone, but I think everybody who walks Main Street, who drives Main Street, recognizes that's not a good place. It is becoming the look of an inner-city Detroit. It's not, it's not a pretty place, and it's going to be, it's going to, if it continues, it will continue, it will depress property values. Something needs to be done. Doing park strips, not enough. Drive the park strips, walk that road, see how many aren't taken care of right now. There's issues. The plan as is doesn't have to be adopted, but we need to proactively look, come to general solutions, come to some agreements on things, and be proactive. Sitting on our hands and hoping that it'll get better in the future is not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayman.
Mr. Hayman, you need to visit Detroit. This doesn't have any semblance of Detroit. We have a wonderful city, and this is a beautiful sight. I love the fact that this involvement is taking place. My name is Rick Bingham, and I live in Centerville. My mother used to say, "One thing begets another." She would get her living room carpeted, and then she'd say, "We need new furniture." She would get her kitchen remodeled, and she'd say, "We need a new dining set." I would like to see Centerville's Main Street look better, but it is kind of a hodgepodge that's grown up over the years, and I can't imagine how much money it would take to make it all look uniform, so I have a little bit of a problem with that. The other thing I would like to say tonight is, my wife and I went on a walk the other day, and we're walking along these sidewalks that are wonky in our neighborhood, not maintained. Many of them have been cement cut to level them, they're still a hazard. Some of them have been painted with yellow paint along the seam where there is danger, so that it would call attention to that. So the thing I'm kind of bringing up here is that if we do create planters and seats along Main Street, benches, they have to be maintained. I have witnessed, in the last year and a half, in Salt Lake City, I've worked in there two days a week, and on Second South, between North Temple and I believe it's Fourth South, they spent $5 million creating bike lanes. And when I say bike lanes, it's not just a painted line, they've put a curb out to mark the area to make it a safety factor. Oh, time's up, I'm sorry.
Third South.
Third South, okay. I've seen probably two or three bikers on that in all this time, in a year and a half. Okay, time's up. Anyway, let's not spend money we don't have, and let's fix what we do have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
My name is Gary Pettit, and I live here in Centerville. Fascism, Nazi, German aggression, words have power, don't they? Words have power. Just run them off the road. Words have power. I have been a cyclist most of my life. I am very concerned with the recent remarks made by city council member Intz. I am a cyclist, and I abide by the law, I respect the law, I'm well-aware of the traffic laws that exist on our roads. I'm very deeply concerned, mystified, perplexed, at an attitude that was expressed that cannot be taken out of context very easily. I think you are the victim of a hot mic, not an errant remark. In my cycling now, I ride the Rio Brand Trail and the Legacy Trail, because I don't want to get hit. I've been hit three times, they were all life-threatening events. I strongly urge that you consider, a car can be weaponized. I looked up two codes, I'm not a lawyer, but it's in there, a car can be weaponized, and flippant remarks can encourage behavior and decriminalize, in a sense, by the use of words, and that is what I'm concerned of tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Mr. Samuelson?
Kim Samuelson, business owner on Main Street, and I just want to, before... Talk to Mike?
Speak loudly, because everyone wants to hear what you have to say, Kim.
Yeah, I'm sure. I just want to say, first, before we begin, I've known Bill Intz for a long time, and if everybody had a mic on him when they made a snide remark, why, we would all be in trouble. He's an honorable man, and if he made an off-color remark, who hasn't? But yours wasn't recorded, so get over it. He's a good man. He's not encouraging everybody to run over.
Thank you. We'd love to hear comments about the Main Street plan.
Okay, next, that's my next point. I want to thank the council and the commission for all their hard work. I realize there's been lots, I can't even imagine how much work's gone into this, but I agree with the points that have been made, that this corridor out here that we're talking about isn't one where, it's one to get places. Sure, it could be improved, but whose street couldn't? All of you guys live on a perfect street? No. So, yeah, it could be improved, but I don't think this is, it needs to be all of this. And again, but my major issue is how this thing came about. And somebody says, "The notices were given." Well, they weren't given. I've been there a long time, and I never heard anything, and some of the others have said the same thing. This was a lame-duck plan that was passed because the new council would probably not have passed it. I can't say for sure, but they wouldn't have passed it like that. And so it was put through, I was never contacted. Be like me going to say, "We want to make an ordinance for your street, and we're going to change this and this, and you're going to have to pay for it yourself." The 30% change to get, will lead, I think, to people not wanting to improve, it'll lead to people leaving things as they are, because they can't afford to make the improvements if they make a change in their building. We have lots of buses that go up and down this street, people need to get where they're going, they want to, they get to school, get their kids, get them to piano, get them to soccer, whatever it is, and they don't have time to sit at the bench, sit on benches and watch the traffic go by and have the traffic slow down. I, for one, think 40 is a minimum. And I don't know, have there been any kids hit on the streets?
Yes. Yeah, please.
And have there been, are the street, are the sidewalks too narrow? What would...
We, this, we'd love to hear comments, this isn't Jeopardy, you don't get a lifeline, or you don't get asked the audience.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think you get my point, I am not for this. Again, I appreciate all of the work, but I would like to see some improvement, but not this extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. I think we're finally to rows five and six, so, Mark, appreciate your sprinting up. Are you five, oh, Mark, you're row seven.
Mayor, can I just say, it's so wonderful to have you all here, we really want to be able to hear from everyone. It's going to get late, and people are going to get tired, so please watch that time limit closely. I'm going to be very brief. I lived in Centerville for like 20 years or so.
Your name?
Dion Holt, Centerville. I want Centerville to be beautiful, I don't know if all of this is going to work out. I'm going to let other people make decisions. My comment is related to the crosswalks, which I think would be part of this. Centerville has done a horrible job about crosswalks. Flags are useless. Both of our main corridors, Main Street and 200 West, the trap, the speed of traffic, which I am very guilty on, I mean, who doesn't want to go fast? But either, if we're not doing traffic lights, then we need to be doing crosswalks like they have in Salt Lake, where they're lighted and there's signs, because my daughter was hit on her bike crossing the wa, on the crosswalk, not even on her bike. Not even on her bike, she wasn't riding it, she was walking it, and she was hit and knocked over.
Which crosswalk was that?
That one was the one right by the library and Target, but so, you know, but that one, I think, is even better seen. I mean, there's no, there's no trees, there's no, I mean, you can, you can see it. I think it was that someone was just really careless and just didn't stop in time, but on Main Street, it's just, and both of them, both of them are horrible as far as trying to get across the street. We need to do something about that immediately. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Most important thing that we need to do, I think.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is your daughter okay?
Oh, it was, it was real wide open, it was just, she's fine, she just...
Zach Penal, Farmington. And I think we all know that words can be very powerful. I mean, there was the, "Let's burn this city down," and the whole town was a firebomb, basically, rioted. So, words can be extremely powerful, and so, a comment such as that is really hard for me to just let go when I, myself, have almost been driven off the road multiple times, and I know people that have been driven off the road multiple times while cycling. So, I'm sorry, but that's, it's kind of, you're in a power, City Council, you need to watch your words a little bit. Was this Main Street? This is all over the place, really, I mean...
Yeah, I'll...
Thank you.
Thank you, audience, for your comments, but we'll...
But I mean, we do have an example right here. I've just heard multiple things, and if you read the comments on Facebook, on KSL, a lot of people don't think it's a joke, or maybe think it's a joke, I don't know, but it's kind of scary as a cyclist. So, I'm just throwing that out there. Let's paint some bike lanes so we do know where to ride, and I will be the first to agree that there are cyclists out there that are stupid, but there's also a lot of motorists out there that never obey the laws, so... But yeah, we do need to be able to know where to ride, we do need to be able to be safe while riding, and there's a common ground, there needs to be a common ground reached. So, I just throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Garth Hare. I'm an engineer, too, and contrary to the guy who used to work at Porky's, I think Main Street's beautiful. I kinda like the variety that we have there. You'll get little pieces of gardens that are out there, you have buildings that come up to the sidewalk, you have sprinklers that get you when you drive by. I like it, and I think it's nice, and I don't think we should spend a lot of money to change it to something that it's not. If we wanted to have a city like Irvine, California, this should've been done about 100 years ago. Have you ever been to Irvine? You can drive 50 miles an hour down the streets, and there's no pass, there's no pedestrians, there's lights at every intersection, and you see nothing but trees and hedges on both sides. All the activity is inside of an enclosed space on each block. I don't like a city like that, it's too, it's too sterile. Well, anyhow, I don't think we should be spending a lot of money on gingerbread, and that's really all this is about, fancy light poles and expanding the sidewalks and putting up planter boxes, just to form obstacles and maintenance headaches. Another word for planter boxes is butt cans. These benches on the sidewalk would become a, an attractive nuisance for the ne'er-do-wells and the homeless. We don't want that in our, on our streets and in front of our homes. The, the bike strips, the painted bike strips, it sounds really good in theory. If we don't understand how to ride a bike and drive cars together on the street, then what we should do is spend some money on education and get the police department to give education classes to people who ride bikes. As you can tell, I'm a bicyclist. I've been riding my bicycle here for over 30 years. I used to ride it every day, and in those days, I did ride down Main Street. Now, I ride down, what is it, Second West, the one where the theater's on?
Fourth West.
And we have all those nice trails out there on the other side of the freeway. I think if anything was gonna be done for bikers, we should put some east-west corridors to get us out there where those are, and not try to encourage more traffic on Main Street.
Thank you.
Let me tell you that a bike strip painted on the street is a hazard, because when you get to the intersection, the paint stops, and suddenly, you're right there with cars coming in different directions, and you, it's a no-man's land.
Thank you.
If we're gonna have bike paths, they need to be either elevated or tunnels underneath the streets, and that's way too expensive. We can't do that.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, one thing, as I leave, the school zones need to be extended. They're too short, and the children coming and going from school, they don't have an adequate place to be because the school zone's only less than 100 feet long. In front of Centerville Junior, you have all that space in front of the school, and the school zone's only about 25%. I have a dozen other ideas I wanted to tell you, but I'm not gonna. Thanks.
Great, we would like to hear those.
Phil Ellsworth, Centerville. First of all, Mayor and council members, thank you for your service to the community. I think it's greatly appreciated. I, I don't think that this is an all-or-nothing deal, at least from my perspective, it's not. I think there's a number of things, though, that have been brought up tonight that I think the council and the planning committee would do well to go back and, and take a second look at. I think it really comes down to two, two major things, and that's functionality and aesthetics. I think much of the functionality pieces of part of this plan, many of us agree with, the safety concerns with regards to crosswalks, improvements to sidewalks, the bike lanes, the bike lane striping, and so on. It's the aesthetic side of things that I think that are the biggest concern here, particularly when we're talking about the amount in relation to two words, purpose and need. 15 feet into the property owner's property seems extremely excessive to me, especially when you consider purpose and need. And the other issue here that I'm concerned about is funding, that I'm sure that all of us are. If we don't have a solid plan in place for funding, then a plan like this should not be stamped and set in stone. It sounds like, right now, the plan is to put the, much of the burden on the backs of the property owners, which I don't think is necessarily fair, but then you are left with two options. One, you can raise taxes, or two, you can go outside to get outside funding. If you go outside to get outside funding, who comes knocking on the door at some point and sees this plan and says, "Hey, if you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours?" And I'm mostly concerned about a particular entity called UTA, who we know is a boondoggle in the state, and they'll come in and say, "Hey, we can beautify this entire corridor, give you everything you want, gold plate the sidewalks and everything else, as long as you agree to let us put light rail down your Main Street, or bus rapid transit, or something else that's gonna cost a fortune." Thank you.
Thank you for, Mr. Ellsworth. All right. Mark, you finally made it.
Don't get your hopes up or expectations. Mark Gabriel, 1912 North 200 Easts. I scrapped my script. I think there's a double standard going on here. We have etiquette for a city council meeting, yet we don't have etiquette among some city council members for how they treat one another. I think the intentional, the intentions by the city council member that drug Bill through the mud with KUTV was far worse than his incidental comment. I'm not justifying it. I think that it's important that, no matter where we are, that we use the right words, but I believe that it's important to remember charity in all that we do, and not try to push our agenda. We could be angry that our project's not going through the way we hoped it would, and take an opportunity at someone's expense, for whatever reason, to get back at them, but that doesn't make it right. I think that our city was embarrassed. I think Bill and his family were wronged, and I think there should be an official apology made by that city council member. And I believe that we all need to put things behind us. I think Bill will attest that he didn't really mean what he said, and I think he actually, on TV, on that newscast, went beyond, and said he was sorry for what he did, and it was an inappropriate comment. So, let's believe him. Anyway, I wanna thank everyone for...
Do you have any comments on the Main Street plan for us, Mark?
I wanna thank everyone for their service, who give service here. I think as far as Main Street goes, we need to stick to fundamentals, safe, safety, crosswalks, things that are needed, rather than things that are nice. There's a lot of repairs and a lot of maintenance that needs to be done before we even think about benches and planters. I mean, a breakaway bench, it could get really complicated. If I'm gonna get hit by a car, if a car's gonna hit a bench and I'm walking behind it, what kind of bench do you think I want? I don't want a breakaway bench. If I'm sitting on a bench, it really doesn't matter anyway if I get hit, what kind of bench it is. Anyway, that's my...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm gonna take the opportunity to interject, just quickly, a response.
No, let's not, let's not go there, please. Let's just focus on, on the purpose that we're here for, which is a public hearing on Main Street. Thank you.
Jennifer Beckstrand, Centerville. I'm going to go there for one second. It is not KSL's fault, and it is not Tammy Fillmore's fault, what Bill said. Sorry. And I did not contact the media. I did not, and it was not my intention.
We'd love to hear your comments on Main Street.
We have the best-looking Walmart in the state. Why do we have the best-looking Walmart in the state? I've driven by there. Have you seen the trees on the west side? They are gorgeous. It's because the planning commission, the city council, had the foresight to make a plan and require that Walmart make it the best-looking Walmart in the state. It was a significant expense to Walmart, but, boy, functionality and simplicity can be found at the Walmart in Leighton, and they can be found at the one in Salt Lake. But our Walmart is in keeping with the character of the city. I have to respectfully disagree with Jason, who is gone. The reason that people don't walk, sit, run, bike on that Main Street corridor is because it's an eyesore. There would probably be more businesses, more people there, if there were some nice, beautiful aspects to Main Street. I think the property owners have maybe been misinformed, because even the most unsightly property on Main Street, which happens to be in the area we're discussing, will never have to make a change. The only thing I would recommend is that they increase that level of requirement from 30% to 50%. That way, they're already making a significant, a significant investment for a nice Main Street. I'm sorry, I think that section of town does look, it's not quite as bad as Detroit, but it, it is pretty unsightly, and if we don't plan, and if we don't have a plan in place, it will deteriorate.
Thank you very much.
Tina Allen, Centerville. I have just a few things that I wanna say, and maybe people will cheer for me when I'm done, not because they agree, but because I'm done early. Number one, as far as notifying people, these business owners didn't know, maybe it was posted on the website, but perhaps we can start sending out something, or delivering something, to the people who are directly involved in something, so that they don't always have to watch their back constantly. Number two is, this is a beautiful plan, and I'd love to see things beautified. I have a problem with the piece that goes back onto property, onto private property. I would like to see us come up with some other kind of plan that will, will only keep it, that will keep it within the public right-of-way, and not affect the private property owners. I think that when you start doing something to one segment of the town, you can come back at any time and do it to the rest of us. I think people would view this a little differently if we were saying, "We wanna take this all the way to Farmington," or if we said, "We're going to impose an impact fee, so if you improve your home by so much, then we will have money to improve Main Street." I think some people would maybe look at it a little differently. My biggest complaint is with the burden on the private property owners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
Steve Allen, Centerville. Couple things, one of the things I think we're kind of forgetting a little bit as we look at the plan is we have a zoning code in effect right now. It was voted in last year. I think that one of the things the council should do is seriously consider dumping that and starting fresh on a new zoning code for this particular district. Within that zoning code, we went out today, we were measuring, and it appears as though, at some point in time, there are four buildings that would have to be torn down to comply with this plan. Yeah, that's right. Yours is one of them. You would have to remove the steps from one. Even Maverick would have to get rid of the gas pumps that are closest to the road at some point in time, based on what we have on the books right now. So, I think we really need to take a look at what's on the books and get that to a point where it can be revised, to be, have more common sense. I, I'm with my wife. I think that there can be a plan to essentially beautify Main Street, keep it within the right-of-way, have it be consistent all the way from Parish to Pages instead of piecemeal. If we do this piecemeal thing, what if Mr. O'Brien decides to not develop his land? It's gonna sit there like that, at least till the day he dies. What if everybody develops along there except for these four buildings? You still, they're not compliant with the current code.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rebecca Pierce, and I live on Main Street in Centerville, down across the street from the junior high. So, I just wanted to have my say as not a business owner, but somebody who is impacted by the way Main Street is functioning right now. I was contacted, actually, to put input in with the planning commission process. I wrote letters, along with several of my neighbors, putting forth our feedback and what we'd like to see. Mostly, the most important thing to me is that the discussion gets to continue. I would like, I, I think that there's definitely room to, to compromise on a lot of these elements, and I, but I think that it's definitely, and it's been evident here tonight, that, that it is decided, or that it is apparent, to me anyway, that we need to do something to improve, even if, from just a safety perspective of the way south Main Street functions. My property butts up against the crosswalk from the junior high. Every day, I have cars squealing on their brakes, going to hit kids in the crosswalk, people that don't stop, for people either that one or by the seminary building. So, I mean, I'm in complete agreement with Dion. If they're gonna, if we're gonna do something, let's do something with the crosswalks. But then I would also like to say that it is very easy for people to sit here and say, a lot of the people that are commenting, "I don't know where you live in Centerville, but I'm guessing that a lot of you live in the northern part of Centerville. Your kids are bused to school." My kids walk to school every day, and my kids have to deal with traffic when they go to their friends' houses. They have to make sure that they are safe when they're crossing the road, and I would like the same care and concern given to my needs as a south Centerville resident, as is given to all these other residential areas. The Fourth West, the speed limit's 25 miles an hour. There's no schools on Fourth West up north of Parish. There are two schools down by where I live, and it's 40 miles an hour, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Lee Gablin, Centerville. In Centerville, for 27 years, I've lived... In Centerville, for twenty-seven years, I've lived here now more than any place in my life.
Lee, could you speak into the mic a little bit closer?
Well, I was just about swallowing it, I thought, but that's fine. But I have a lot more content, a lot more examples, that would not be very timely here tonight. Uh, I'd like to participate in some of this stuff. Uh, uh, I'm a former recreation planner for the Forest Service, and I have an appreciation for things that look nice. We try to blend in in my career to do these kinds of things. And I have some analogies here, some feelings, people may or may not agree with me, but it comes straight from my heart. Having spent, uh, my career in small rural communities, when we transferred, but were transferred by the Forest Service to the Wasatch Front, our parameters for choosing Centerville had nothing to do with the existing or the future appearance of Main Street, its sidewalks, or its building facades. Our largest consideration was avoiding the congestion and population density of the main urban Salt Lake Valley, what we called "the sea of people." We wanted a smaller community with the open space of residential yards, parks, and natural backdrops of scenery such as the mountains to the east and the wetlands and lake to the west. The narrow linear layout of Centerville was a plus, as it provides closer proximity of these to each residence and neighborhood. Traditional community values and good neighbors were also important. Centerville had its own unique look, feel, and character, which was, was, uh, fine with us, and still is. We recognize that the true measure of a person is not what one sees from the outside, what they might live in, drive, or wear, but the content of the inner self that cannot be easily viewed with a casual glance, such as values, beliefs, core principles, personality traits, and attitudes. We knocked on the doors of our neighborhood, and we met all of our neighbors before purchasing our home, as we were not only choosing a shelter, but we were choosing the shelter of our neighbors and our neighborhood.
Lee, we'd, we'd love to hear the whole thing. Is that something you could email or, or leave with us, that we could-
Well, you know, the reason I spoke up was this is just as germane as some of these, and I, I'm sorry, I came from Cache Valley, rushed down, took a shower, 'cause I was working on my apartments up there. But I think this is just as germane, and there's an analogy here.
Okay. But, but-
Uh, and I wish you would treat us all the same. This is regarding Main Street. Now, I hope I get this time, you've just disrupted. We felt, we felt our neighborhood consisted, a neighbor, a good neighborhood consists more of good people than of, uh, the appearance of facilities. The same thing is true of community or a Main Street neighborhood. We believe that this future quality of Main Street will be dependent more on the quality of goodness of residents, businessmen, and businesses that occupy those sites than it will be on any amount of decoration. I am not opposed, and I promote, good, solid crosswalks, instead of these thin little lines you can't see as you come down the street. We need more streetlights in this town to break up traffic so people can get across the street. But I think that we're becoming a little heavy-handed in our, in our resort to ordinances and laws that defeat the very oaths that each person up here in the council has taken, to defend life, liberty, and property. We do well on the first, but on the second, too, it is diminishing, and I'm asking for this, what's my time? I'm asking for this, and I'll submit some written comment also. Isn't there room for diversity? Isn't there room for variation? Can't we have consensus without conformity? And can't we have some discussion and inclusion, so that we can have some unity? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skabland. I think, I hope we're getting close to rows seven and eight, nine, ten.
I'll be fast. My name is Connie Davies. I live at five sixty North One Hundred East, Centerville, Utah. And my first thing is, I want to echo what a gentleman said earlier about the sidewalks, and how he'd like to have more sidewalks. That's not, not part of Main Street, but that is a big issue for me and my family. We go walking and we hit a end of a sidewalk all the time, and then we have to take our kids on our bikes on the road, and that's really disruptive to me. Um, I'd also like to, I'm standing here, 'cause I want to show my sincerity of the emails I've been sending to city council. I've sent several emails. I've gotten a few responses, but not very much. Um, I moved to Centerville in two thousand nine because of the walkability score. I sought out Sherry Lindstrom when I moved here, because I really liked her path program in the community. I liked how she developed those things, and I talked to her about some of my ideas on walkability. I do have a small family, so I don't spend a lot of time at meetings, because that's bedtime, and that's not a good time for me to not be home. I wish that, I, there are many things in this plan that I think a lot of people do not like, but I really would like to say that as, me as a walker, and as walking with my family, I would really hope that we could come to some compromises and come to some ideas. In my emails, I've told you the things that I think make a really good walkable street. They're very simple, they're very easily doable, um, and I, in the time, I won't go over all those things, but I ask you, could you please look at those emails again, um, and look at the efforts of some of us? I feel like my voice is getting lost in politics, and that's very dis- concerning to me, as a citizen, because this is an issue that's important to me, 'cause I walk those streets with my kids. We, I moved here to walk to the library, I moved here to walk to the, the different things, and, um, I would really appreciate it if our voices could be heard. Um, and I've sent some directly to Robyn. Robyn, you're welcome to share those with the rest of the council, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Connie?
Hi, I'm Britta Johnson. Um, I'll be very succinct, 'cause I know we're short on time. I run, I cycle, I walk on Main Street. I walk with my family four days a week. Yes, Pokemon Go, it's a thing. It's awesome. But my kids go to Taylor. I chose my location because I am within a mile of the high school, Taylor, and Centerville Junior High. I believe the kids can wa- should walk, and should feel safe walking. I would like to see wider side- sidewalks. I think that those, um, the park strip on the other side, really not necessary. Benches for the bus stops are great. Um, lighting is important. Uh, another thing, when I walk on the sidewalk currently now, I have a stroller, a kid with me, if I, there's someone else, either of us has to move over. The sidewalk is not wide enough. I think it should be wider. We have, um, a high-speed limit I think we need to look at, because of the junior high, the school zone is a little too small. Um, also, for the businesses, there's a thing grandfathering stuff in. Leave it alone. If they do do those improvements that are substantial, you can set a reasonable percentage after a dialogue with those business owners. Great, let's go for that. But, um, that area from, I'll say, I don't know where the schools are, that's an area we need to make very walkable. That's the traff- foot traffic that I see happening. Um, gosh, just so you know, too many parents drive their kids to school across the street because they're afraid to let them walk, and I'll leave it with that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Britta.
Megan Wells, Pittford Drive-In, Centerville. And I feel like us moms must have been sitting together, 'cause I'm gonna say basically the same thing. I don't walk that portion of Centerville, because I feel like it's not safe. We, I love that I can walk to the store to get a gallon of milk. I love that we can walk to the library, and we do that often. I love that we have these things in our community, but I do not walk that part of Main Street, because I don't feel it's safe with my kids. But I feel like this plan, as it's been proposed, does make it safe, um, and also enjoyable to walk on. It's not enjoyable to walk on right now. Trees, I sunburn, I don't like the heat. Trees are nice, they give shade. Um, also, from a physical therapist's perspective, uh, people that have difficulty getting around, people in wheelchairs, it's not accessible. Uh, currently, where there's a crosswalk by the junior high, there is no dip in the sidewalk there for a wheelchair to get up and over, and it's the same problem if you have a bike, a kid on a bike, or a stroller, as it is often for a wheelchair. Um, so, just looking at how that makes it more accessible and functional to those people, we have an assisted living facility right, just east of this area we're talking about. And it would make it more accessible and functional for them, as well as for me as a mom. Um, all these things, including the, I know the benches have kind of, I almost feel like they've been bashed on, but it actually makes it so people can be out and more active. I work with people where I set goals, "Can you walk three hundred feet?" Now, that's not very far, that's like, from your kitchen, maybe, to your bedroom. So, if they can walk and have a place to sit, and then walk another three hundred feet, that makes a big difference, and those benches should be considered and not thrown out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Hi, my name is Mindy Megelson. I am from Centerville. I am not a homeowner, wish I was. Um, I'm also very, I'm not very eloquent, and I'm really sorry, so you're just gonna have to deal with that. Um, my worry is about the Main Street thing. Uh, you know, we took, we took people's property away to make a two-lane turn. Okay? That was really easy, so now we're gonna do it again. Okay? Just because it says that you can, doesn't mean that we should. These are people's property. They bought it in the first place, thinking that they were gonna keep it. Do I support making it more beautiful? Yes. But I don't think that we need all of the things that are in the plan there. I kind of come from my mother, where I'm a neat freak. Not gonna go sit on public benches. It's been rained on, the wind gets on there, it's dirty. Not gonna do it. Besides that, what if, when I'm out walking? I'm out walking. I'm not gonna sit down. Makes me lazy. I don't wanna go anymore, anywhere anymore, so I'll turn around and go home. Um, I do agree with the wider sidewalks, but I don't agree putting planters and just taking things away from people, okay? I understand that we'd want to make it prettier. I've driven down that way several times. I go that way sometimes to go to work. But, uh, I just don't think that we need it that immaculate, pretty. I, I agree with that. Um, that money can be spent, like Bingham said, fixing up all those things. My dad fell, and Centerville said he wouldn't do anything about it. He broke his fingers, he really bruised up his face, but being the kind man that he is, he spent his own money to, to take care of that. Um, one more thing. Has anybody ever said anything wrong in their whole entire life? Think back in junior high and high school, when we were stupid, and we'd say things. Now, in the public view, we shouldn't say things like that. I get it, and there are things that we shouldn't say, but he has apologized.
Thank you.
And so, that's all I, all I have to say, is that because we say things stupid sometimes, you need to be a little bit more forgiving.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Mark Burhold. I'm a resident of Centerville. A friend of mine in the neighborhood asked me to come by tonight. I wasn't aware of your, that your meeting was taking place, so I appreciate his invitation. Um, it, I'm accustomed to seeing, having dealt with a number of planning commissions and city councils in other communities before, uh, a master plan that's based on a little more substantive data than I'm currently observing from our master plan. I'd like to make a formal recommendation, that the South Main Plan be placed on hold, and that it go back for further study, for evaluation of the following types of data. I'd like to see traffic count, traffic flow, and a general study of all of the main thoroughfares in Centerville, so that when we make plans for redesigning thoroughfares, or main corridors, as our planning commissioner said, that we don't shunt traffic or move traffic to other residential areas that would be disadvantaged from those changes. I've lived in communities where they've done that, where they've put planters and so forth, uh, down, uh, streets like Main Street, and they've slowed the traffic flow, forcing traffic to other adjacent semi-main roads, which has increased traffic in the residences. So, I'd like to see that data, and I'd like to see more substantive information before the council moves forward in either accepting or rejecting the, uh, master plan, particularly as it relates to the South Main Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burhold.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'll take just a minute. My name's Mark Olischleger. I am from Centerville, also a member of the Trails Committee, and, uh, I'm grateful that we have an upcoming work session with the council, and I've also written comments, and I know that you're familiar, familiar with those. Um, my only real purpose in speaking tonight is to echo, I think it may have been Tim Hawks, one of the gentlemen speaking, said that this has been done well in other cities before, and there are things that we can do. And as a resident here, I am in support and in favor of things that help to beautify that street and bring us all, uh, together in terms of vision, scope, purpose, and, and so, I, I'm one that would be willing to pay for lampposts. I think they're, I think aesthetically, they're a wonderful thing in a community, and they can, they can make a difference in the look and feel, and we, we do have a long way to go in beautifying our Main Street and making it more functional. We've talked about crosswalks, we've talked about trees. I think it's time for some action. This has been in the works for a long time. I would like to see movement. I also, uh, see that it's clear that the process has to continue, that we need to better involve some of these business owners, but I, I think it's also unfair, and I'm trying very hard not to personalize any of this, but to impugn any council members who have served so hard and for so long, uh, in trying to bring this about, our Planning Commission. I think they've worked in, very much in good faith. And I would say the same of Councilman Ince, I'm sure. I, I've worked with each of you, I think, in different capacities, other than Councilman Ince, and I, and I, we've been in meetings together before. I'm not doubting anyone's integrity here, but I think it's unfair to, to doubt Councilman Fillmore's integrity in this process. I think she's a good servant of our community, and, and I think she's been misaligned or maligned unfairly tonight, um, in some of the comments that have been made, and so I would just say, I, I think she is well-meaning, and, uh, and I think it's important to re- I would like to see more courtesy, period, within our city. I listened to all the meetings, I went back to June, I listened to the July meeting before I made any of my comments, and, uh, and I, I have to say that I, I just think it's time for a little bit more courtesy and civility. Everybody's well-meaning. You, I've worked with all of you, and I think you would say that I've, we've worked well together, and, and I think there's, and, and Robyn, you're terrific on the Trails Committee, and it's, it's fun, and, and you've said some nice things about our committee, and we, you know, I just, I'm just hopeful that we can return to that, and I will say, again, I, I am not here, and, and never was my intention, to, to be difficult, and, and grateful for the apology that was issued and so forth, and I, I, I agree with a lot of the comments here. We say things, and they get recorded and so forth. I would say, though, that I'm more concerned about some of the comments leading up to that statement, the soundbite, than I was about the comment itself, and I do think, even though everybody's saying bike lanes are great, they're a moot point, and, and I know that there's support, there's always been support on the council, I'm just concerned about some of the statements that would, might lead us to take a step backward on those things, and a misunderstanding of the cycling community. So, I think it's important to know, and I, I look forward to talking about that. As a committee, you guys have been grateful, I, I listened to the end of the recording, work session, everybody's excited about it, we'll have a chance to talk about that, but I just, I am concerned, uh, with respect to, you know, just maybe some misunderstandings as to how cyclists use this community, and, and the prevalence, and having had some close calls on, on bicycle, uh, I, I look forward to that work session, and, uh, I look forward to working with you, and I do thank each of you for your service, and I enjoy working with each, each of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Hello, my name is Rob Oaks. Um, I'm from Centerville. Um, I would like to take a moment to read in a petition, um, that includes the signatures of two hundred and eighty-seven other Centerville residents. Um, if I might have a forbearance to read that petition, and then afterward, I would like to take just two minutes to make a statement as a, as a citizen. Is that acceptable?
I think it'd be better just to send it into the public record.
Yeah, we'd like to make it part of the public record, if you can, if you can send that in, please.
I think he's representing two hundred and eighty-seven voices, though. I think it's reasonable for him to take two minutes to read that in.
You're welcome to take two minutes to, to do whatever you'd like, uh, and if there's others who would like to, to speak.
Absolutely. I briefly just want to speak, then, as a Centerville resident. Um, a copy of this will be sent to the city council, and my understanding is that all documents posted as part of this are part of the public record?
Correct.
Great. All right. I've lived in Centerville for all of my life. Um, I'm thirty-six years old this year, and I've lived here for thirty years. In those thirty years, I have ties to almost everybody in this room. Um, many of you I consider to be nigh on two parents. I've got ties to Councilman Ince. I rode horses with his daughter, Mary. I rode horses with his daughter, Mary. And so I would just like to speak to one thing. In the 30 years I've lived in Centerville, this city has changed enormously. We've watched the fields and the meadows, and the builds that used to be on Chase or Parish Lane are now stores and shops. And we have got to have some sort of comprehensive plan to help guide the development of our city, or it won't develop in a way that we would like, the way that we wish to see. 20 years ago, Bountiful City put into place a comprehensive plan, and now, 20 years later, we are seeing the fulfillment of that plan. Drive through their area from the city park through the downtown area, and you will see people gathered, enjoying one another's company, walking, cycling, and otherwise enjoying a high quality of life. Centerville at this time lacks that in its downtown areas. However, we see it in the 400 West Corridor. The addition of bike lanes and other walkable components to that lane transformed that neighborhood, as many, many, many people have written in to state to the city council. And as a result, I would like to fully voice my full support for the elements of the plan. Yes, we can compromise them. Yes, we need to make discuss, yes, we need to have discussions on how to pay for them. But they represent a comprehensive vision that is wonderful, and is the place that I want to raise my sons for the next 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Cammy Layton, Centerville City. I live across the street from the junior high, and if words have power, I wanna say thank you to our city council. I have slept better the last, since January than I have in quite a few years, so I just wanna say thank you. And I'm so thankful that I don't have to use my script tonight. I thought it would be a different type of a meeting, and I'm grateful that I don't have to use it and share it with you. Just to talk about, very quickly about the, the Main Street plan. I work on Bountiful. I've worked on Bountiful Main Street for years. And as beautiful as it is, some of it is a hazard. Those planter boxes are out too far. Kids play on them. I've seen more near accidents with cars and pedestrians. It's hard to get out, and I know there won't be parking on Main Street, but I've seen more near misses with cars. The trees don't get taken care of. I think they've got the trees too close together, and I love trees. I cried when my peach tree died. I love trees, but I think they've planted the trees too close together and the wrong type of tree on Main, on Bountiful Main Street. As far as benches, I would agree with benches at the bus stops. I don't think we need them. I love to take walks with my husband on Sunday evenings or just any other time, and I'm old-fashioned. I kinda like it the way it is, minus the weeds. And I think we need to be really careful. If we're gonna go after property owners on Main Street, you might as well go after a lot of homeowners in Centerville, because we have a lot of terrible yards that are not kept up. So I think we need to be careful. We can't just complain about Main Street when we have yards, inside yards, that aren't kept up either. So I think we need to be very careful. So I like some aspects of the plan, and I, and I think we can work with it. And I think that our city council can do a great job, and I am a very, what's the word? I like to be careful with money. And I think we have the perfect people on our city council that will be careful with our money and careful with our uses. And I just wanna say thank you. I've slept so good since you've been on the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Layton.
Brian Willie, Centerville. Contrary to what some people think, Main Street's never gonna be Bountiful. It's never gonna be Downtown Disney. I live on, off Chase Lane, and I don't care how many planter boxes you put, or how nice the light poles look, I'm not gonna walk down to Main Street to hang out. I'm gonna walk around my neighborhood. I'm not gonna walk down to Main Street to enjoy the planter boxes. One of the things that I've not heard in any of these meetings is, what's this gonna cost? What's the total bill? And then with that total bill, what's it gonna cost me, and what's it going to raise my taxes? Somebody's mentioned already, every time we add something, we're gonna be paying for Utopia, the boondoggle that some of you got us into, for years. And now we're gonna put this grand plan into place without a budget and without an idea of what it's gonna cost to make it Downtown Disney. If I'm gonna go to a gathering place, I'm gonna go to Farmington Station. I'm gonna go down to Salt Lake. I'm not even gonna go to Bountiful. There's nothing there to draw me there unless I'm gonna buy a pair of shoes of Barton's or something. So I think we need to look at the, at the cost for this. I'm all for improving the, the Main Street so we can walk the streets, walk, I used to walk that, my kids walked that from my house on Chase Lane all the way to the junior high. I'm all for having safe sidewalks, but all of the bells and whistles and the fluff, I think, are unnecessary when you're looking at the cost, especially those when you're looking at fixed incomes and whatever else. If we take it away from the property owners, which they shouldn't have to pay for, you're gonna give it to the citizens. And I'm opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robin Gabriel, 1912 North 200 East in Centerville. I'm, I'm okay with a plan, and I think the plan needs to be, the foremost reason is for safety. And the best idea that I've heard tonight was the idea of the flashing lights on the crosswalks, that that is a real important thing to do. But I don't want it to be at the expense of individual rights. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brooke Holman, and I'm here in Centerville. I actually was one of the 287 people who signed the petition, and I'd like to request for my two minutes, I'd like to read that in.
Sure.
Could I get a copy of that? Dear Centerville City Council, we, the undersigned citizens of Centerville, want to thank you for your diligent efforts to make Centerville great. We appreciate your willingness to listen on issues of importance to many of us, most recently the density issue. The current issues that are on the table, improving the South Centerville Main Street Corridor with the public space plan, and the friendliness and safety of our city's roads to all users are ones that we can all get behind, that can hopefully unite Centerville rather than divide. We want to see the planning commission and city council undertake all reasonable efforts to work with those most affected to beautify Main Street and make it a public space friendly to all users. People ought to be able to walk, run, and bike there safely, and as a public space, it should reflect, to the extent possible, a cohesive and positive design that speaks well of our, and, sorry, that speaks well of and promotes our city. Those goals are worth some investment all around. We share these goals. Number one, respect the qualities that Centerville already has, and yet recognizes that we can improve in some areas, particularly on our rundown historic Main Street commercial area. Number two, safety for all, all of our citizens, young and old, pedestrian and driver, biker and schoolchildren. Number three, success for our existing businesses and also for new businesses, which is helped greatly by a cohesive plan. Number four, respect the historic nature of the residential neighborhood east of Main Street and all of the residences on the south side of Centerville, for which this section of Main Street plays an important role. Number five, maintain our quality of life and property values. We suggest that it makes sense to leave the current plan in place until we can get better public agreement from affected residents and businesses alike about what, if anything, should replace it, consistent with the goals outlined above. We strongly urge you to add bike lanes to the general plan as suggested by the Trails Committee. We understand that all plans have cost considerations, both, both for new businesses that would be required to put these elements in place, and also for the city in maintaining those elements. Costs can be measured in many ways, however, and doing nothing will impose its own costs on the city and its future. In all events, we do not support promoting Main Street only as a high-speed thoroughfare, nor do we think it's a hopeless case, a pig, or a Yugo to be left as is. We encourage the city council to work with the planning commission towards a shared vision that improves our public spaces and makes Centerville an even more attractive place to live. We trust you to do so in a way that unites rather than divides our community. Thank you for all of your hard work and for listening to us on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
Hi, my name is John Urie. I'm a 30-year resident of Centerville. I first wanna just thank the planning commission for their work that they have done. I wanna thank Centerville City Council, all five of you, for the great work that you do, and I know that each one of you wants the best for our city, and I respect you for, for what you do. Just wanna say that I do favor the present plan, at least as a starting point. I don't mind some modifications as we go through and work out the details, but I think the alternative of starting where we're at today, which, I just have to say, I know a lot of people in Centerville, I, I, I love every one of them dearly, and I'm sorry if I disagree with you, but I think much of Main Street is pretty ugly, and I think it needs to be improved. So I'll still love you even if you continue to disagree with me. So I, I just point out as well, an example, I know that downtown Salt Lake City is very different from Centerville, but I think it's a good example to think about. When you look at the vast amounts of money and effort that have gone into beautifying downtown Salt Lake City, and also I would say in Ogden as well, by the LDS Church, by the local governments, and by many other entities, I think it's, I'm, I'm about as fiscally conservative, I think, as you'll find anybody, but I think it's worth putting some money into making our Main Street more beautiful than it is. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Hatch, and I do bike and ride on Main Street. I live on Canyon Breeze with my four children. I have a hard time whenever I cross Main Street. I've had an experience where I crossed and got halfway through and realized we'd gone too soon, and there was a car coming on the other side with the traffic going the other way after we'd passed the first half. And so I told everyone to stop, and then my youngest, and we all had bikes, ran out 'cause she was scared. And so I just would, yeah, love if we had a really awesome crosswalk, and I think having it close to east of the library would be ideal. Maybe encouraging people to walk. I do have to admit that when I go out and walk with my children, I do not see a lot of people out doing the same thing that I am doing. And that would be fun to see more people out, so if there are things that we can do to be creative to make that happen, I didn't come with any great ideas, but I guess that's why we're here. And I also, I love the idea of like a, a flashing light, you push the button, it goes on when it's time to cross, and maybe just one on the whole Main Street. But somewhere to start.
Thank you, Ms. Hatch.
Good evening. I'm Bud Hollingshead. I'm a resident of about 40 years. And moved here from a beautiful place in Southern California, the desert called Barstow, which I don't like to publicly admit. And the last 40 years, I have seen this part of Main Street get uglier and uglier. Now, I'm a taxpayer, I know that everything requires money. I don't know that we have to throw the plan out to improve. I would just like to encourage this council on your watch to do something. You've got a chance to leave a legacy that will be improved or appreciated for many, many years. This is not gonna be easy. It's not gonna be something that's easily fundable. We don't have to do everything in the plan. My suggestion is don't throw out what we have. Work on it, improve it, and I wanna compliment you for the effort you're making to work together. I think the best thing we can do is have a unified council. As I talk to people I love in this audience that are concerned citizens, I hope we don't have talk anymore of this being Robin's plan, or George's plan, or Tammy's plan. We've heard enough tonight that many, many people in this community wanna see improvement. So please work together. It will not be easy. It will not come together all at once, but do not throw out the initiative to improve this part of town. Thank you for what you do. I appreciate all that you've put up with and support you in any way I can in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Turnblum, Main Street, Centerville. I have mixed emotions about this whole thing, because yes, we need a plan that will beautify the city, but I wonder how much plan we need. I live in this area that needs to be improved. We, my family owns two homes along that, well practically the only two homes along that space. And we're trying to make our property look better, but it takes time, and it takes lots of money, and we are doing the best we can under the guidelines that are there. And something needs to be there. I kind of almost think that putting the bike lanes in are gonna kind of solve some of the safety issues on the sidewalks. But I also know that unless you can convince UDOT to take the speed limit down, it's never gonna be safe. I was in my driveway last week, and we heard a crash and a yell, and a bicyclist had, his tire had popped, he had tipped over onto the curb, he broke his hip, had to have a complete hip replacement, when I talked to his wife two days later. One person stopped to help him. My brother went out to help him, he was in the driveway with us. One person stopped, nobody else slowed down. So whatever you can do to make it safe is great, but there's some aspects that we can't change that isn't gonna make it safe. So I'd like to see a plan for the park strip and sidewalks. I don't think it needs to go into the, the private property, because I think if you have people that have that private property, they wanna make it the best they can, but it does take time for them, and it does take a great amount of expense. But I think they will do it on their own because they want to be proud of their piece of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard tonight? If there's no one else who would like to be heard, then I guess I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I had one property owner who is almost 90, or is 90, and wanted me to just let them know that they are the owners. I have a signed paper from them of Don's Meat, Rex's, and Lois's Sessions.
Uh-huh.
And they were very much against the plan.
Okay. So there were not as many questions as we usually get. I'm not su, I'm just trying to look to see if there were any that need to be answered. I, I would note, and I would encourage, since we normally don't get this great of an audience, that if you go to the city website, there is a place you can sign up to receive city agendas sent to you every two weeks via email. I'd encourage you to subscribe to the city's Twitter feed, which will send you notifications of, of meetings to your mobile phone, if you choose that. We, we really want to get the word out to people, but we don't want it to be a burden, and we've found that sending expensive regular postal mail is not particularly effective. So we'd encourage you to, to sign up for those regular alerts. There, there was a question about who's responsible or liable for an injury when it happens in the public right-of-way in front of somebody's house. I can't imagine that Lisa wants to answer that in 30 seconds, but that was the first question I had.
I think the context of the question was what happens on a bench that's installed on the, on the, in the, in the-
In the private or in the private? It's a- In the private, not in the public?
It's a installment by a owner in the, the-
Public record. Well-
The question was, Jason, he and I talked about that. His question was, if we're as, as owners of the land, required to maintain that bench out in front of our building, my building and their building, and an injury occurs, is, are we as owners of property that the bench is sitting on liable, or is it the city? And then the second part of that question was, who maintains the bench?
And I think we've had, the current plan says that it's the private property owner. However, I think we've had a recommendation from the planning commission that says, these, if, their recommendation is the city should maintain these. So that's, that's where we are on that.
Yeah, but it can't be fair that I'm liable as an owner for somebody's injury, and I finish that up as force of law.
Well, and, yeah, it is difficult to answer in 30 seconds. These kind of liability questions are very fact-specific, but the bright lines are, for instance, if, if it's a public improvement in the city right-of-way. So we own it, and it's on our property. The city's not automatically liable just because somebody runs into the- city's not automatically liable just because somebody runs into the pole, but the city does have a duty to reasonably maintain either that sidewalk or that light pole. And so that's where, if we don't maintain it properly, or we fail to install it properly, or it's negligently designed, some liability might occur with that. Now, sometimes in some of our plans, we require private improvements. So let's take Iggy's. We put in a, Iggy's put in a fire pit. That was part of their amenities in the parish gateway area. However, in my opinion, that's a private amenity on private property, and if somebody gets burned or something happens with that, that's probably the property owner's liability issue. I think this plan does raise some issues where if we say we want a public bench on private property, that's right in the middle of those two scenarios. It's an interesting question. Now, we do require people to take the snow off the sidewalk so they have some maintenance obligation. People usually take care of the trees, but that may be something we want to look at is, I'd rather have the bright line where the public bench is in the public right of way, then we know who maintains it and who's responsible for that, rather than creating this, you know, and if there's a bench, if they want to put a bench, then it would be the private bench, and they would be responsible to maintain it.
Thank you very much. So we've been at this for some time. The council, welcome to continued deliberations. I'd suggest we take a break.
I think it's a unified decision will probably take place on that one.
To take a break?
I think so.
Thank you very much for spending so much of your time to give us feedback. This is useful. It's appreciated. Thank you for your involvement, for caring about our community. When we all care about our community, it improves our community, and you've, citizens have shown that they love Centerville and they care about it. So thank you so much for giving us your time this evening.
Mayor, are we-
We're just taking a break. We're not adjourning.
Are we going to discuss what we've heard and our own feelings and give a direction to staff after the break?
We're gonna take a break, yes.
I would suggest, though, that we...
All right, Jake, are we live again? All right, we reconvened our city council meeting. We appreciate all the comments that have been shared with us. Council, you have the option to, my recommendation is that we at least continue to receive public comment, written comment via email for a period of time. You're welcome to share your comments now, table the discussion, or do something else such as agree to meet with the planning commission again, or hold another, or continue to receive public comment. My recommend-
I would definitely suggest that we receive public comment for, at least until the next meeting, and possibly longer.
I would agree with that.
Great.
That's good.
I agree also, and I was going to say that I think the next step, I think we've obviously heard that people are interested in improvements. We just don't know what level that will be, and there's a lot to work out. We need to get stakeholders to the table. So in addition to continuing to take public comments, I would ask the council to look forward to next time we discuss this, to either lay out a process of how to move forward, or to even just have a work session again with the planning commission for their input as well for how to move forward with that process.
Thank you. Another option would be to have a work, invite the business owners to a work session.
That would be good.
That would be a wise thing.
I think that's a way to continue the comment.
Maybe have the business owners and the planning commission.
Great. The more the merrier. I mean, look how much fun we had tonight.
That's right.
Hey, we're not done yet. How much fun we're having.
So, we are having fun. So I would love to invite the owners in these zones, whether they be residential or, I mean, almost all the commercial properties, but to invite them to participate in another work session where we talk more specifically about, okay, if the current plan has, is a little too much, what would be appropriate for this area? Because I heard a lot of comments that you should have some plan, and that some improvements would be good, but can we do it in a way that's not so onerous? So-
So would now be the time for us to mention any additional things that we've thought about, or are you wanting that to wait until another time?
I mean, I think that would be most productive to have a work session with the planning commission and business and property owners along Main Street, and bring those ideas and have them more in a workshop environment. If you have something you want to say tonight to put on the public record, I welcome those, but I think that would be a more productive use and then move on to the, to our-
Just, just to have something to think about in the, I took my daughter out, and we measured eighteen feet back on every property in this section, and in order to put in the plan the way it is right, the way it is right now, we would be required to remove twenty-nine established trees in order to put in new trees. And so the whole, the whole idea of symmetry, which was something that came from the planning commission that they wanted it symmetrical, I think that that symmetry is something we really need to look hard at.
It has a cost, a significant cost.
Well, in addition, the, the street is not flat, and when you look at, say, where Leon Nielsen's CPA office is there, if you go back the eighteen feet, you've got, he'll be required to put in a retaining wall because there's over a two-foot change in elevation from the, the level of the street to what will now be the parking lot there to the north of his place. And on the other side, if you go to Pizza Perfect where they already have a retaining wall, they'll be required to remove that retaining wall, and they will have less than two feet between the front of their building and the, the end of the eighteen feet that we're talking about. And in that less than two feet, they'll have to put in a retaining wall and have customers shimmy into their front door. So I'm a little concerned about the eighteen feet, and I'm concerned about the symmetry, because if you want it symmetrical, then it has to be at the same level. And, and the street is already so different from one side to the other. I don't think that's really a doable thing.
Thank you.
I have just one comment that I told the property owner I would make, and it was something I hadn't thought of, so that's pretty good, because I've been thinking about this a long time. They, was one of the property owners that said, "I'm not worried about it because I have a different, you know, I'm not, there's no plans for me to change my building, and it's, you know, I'm going to keep it." But then when they thought about it, they called me and they said, "I'm really concerned because the property next to me will probably be developed. They'll put this beautiful sidewalk and benches and flowers. I don't have room for it. I won't do it." And so are we going to have little ghettos downtown because we've got the beautiful, and then we've got just a little ugly sidewalk, and then beauty, and then, and so he was very concerned that it could bring his property value down.
I would think that would increase the property value if you have, generally if you have a nice property next to you, that increases your value.
But then it makes his look ugly, because I'm just, I'm just passing that on.
Thank you. Any, any other comments that council members would like to make before I entertain a motion to-
I have a couple, but go ahead, Bill.
I had one other one that I was going to make. Randy is here. I'm sorry. Randy is here, and we're, are we finished on the project on eighteen twenty-five?
Yes, we're having the final walkthrough tomorrow. We put a punch list in tomorrow.
Okay. There's still a punch list. I-
But, but my comment was, before we start anything, I think we need to make some kind of a decision and resolution about sidewalks and trees.
Which is going to be, we're going to talk about that. We've got that study done.
That's your next work session.
Sidewalks and the trees are first, because it's a curve, and so we'll be having a specific meeting on that.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is, is I think before we make any decisions, that's part of it.
Okay. I, I would love, we're having a work session on August sixteenth on that, but I would like to have a public hearing on that as well.
Yes.
We may need to prepare some material for that, so that maybe that has to be the first of September instead of August sixteenth, after we have that work session. Good point.
Okay. Thank you. I have some past information here that I think is valuable as far as the process that was followed for that first step of the Main Street plan, and that's the general plan. And really, the general plan should be the quote-unquote easier step of the process because it's at a general level. When you get into the specific questions, which there are so many of, it should be an even more in-depth process. So I was involved in that process and looked back on some information. I was invited to sit on the committee in January of two thousand eight, along with a mix of representation, property owners, business owners on Main Street, citizen neighbors who live close to Main Street, so that we could get all of those different perspectives, a representative or two from the commission, and a representative or two from the council. And then those, that group of people met for months to just formulate ideas and, and where to go from here, and then at that point, and by the way, before that happened, all the property owners were notified and invited and asked who would like to participate. So that's how that list was made. And then after that, there was an open house with the very general ideas, and not only was it an open house that everyone was invited to, but specific invitations to anyone, anyone's property touching Main Street. And so a lot of people here probably got that invitation, and that went out to a hundred and seven property owners. And then even after that, the process continued for quite some time. So my point is, is that we, we do have a plan in place right now, which I think is very important to keep in place for protection, because it's always easier to get an application and have someone say, "Oh, look, when I look at the logistics, this doesn't work, so give me an exception," versus if we don't have a plan in place, something could happen. But there are so many details to work out. We all know that, and so we'll need to get a working committee together to do that. And I just want to say that it's going to be the process that matters and gathering data, and so there's a lot of data to be gathered. So it will be a lengthy process. And then I just wanted to make the one other comment that I was going to make at the beginning of the meeting, and then as I want it perfectly clear, I was able to have a chance to speak with Bill before the meeting, but I did hear rumors right before I came that people, that people were spreading that I had contacted the media, and that this was for personal gain, and that is just absolutely not true. And my desire is only to share facts of what happens at City Hall with residents, and then let them decide what their opinions are and go from there.
So I've heard a willingness to continue to receive public comments, at least via email for the next, until the next council meeting. I would love to see us meet with, with the property owners and the planning commission together to have a work session on this. I think it's an easier way to get ideas out and figure out how do you make some modifications that we can get people on board with. That would be, to me, that sounds like a good idea. We could form another committee. That could take a lot of time. We have planning commissioners and city council people that are, that are very invested in this, and I think a desire to move forward.
I agree with that, and besides that, I think sometimes it causes problems, because I know that committee, a lot of the people on that committee feel like they came up with a plan and it wasn't the one that they chose. So I'm not sure we don't cause more feelings that way, anyway.
So would you like a motion?
So I would like a motion to continue to receive public comment electronically or written until the next meeting, and to work with city staff and the planning commission to schedule a work session and invite property owners to participate in that.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Robert, make your vote.
All right. We'll try to fit in another work session on that. Thank you very much. We have other items on our agenda tonight that we'd hope to get to. The immediate, next item number three, bid to Mountainland, the amount of forty-four thousand for radio read equipment for the water department.
I thought we were going to reorder that by order of fatigue of city staff.
Yeah, we, that-
I'm not joking. I'm serious.
I would, I would like to have, I'd love to have the police chief go first, if you're okay. He's-
I just may, may not make it eighteen twenty-five north in the morning.
To fix that crooked street sign?
Sorry, he just looked more exhausted than you did, so.
So we're taking number, we're taking number four first.
Thank you. Do you want me to just make a-
So the, we're, we're here to have Chief Child speak to us about his revised request for a new position involving a civilian in the police department.
Yes, thank you, Council Mayor. There's a couple of driving factors here that I want to make sure that you're aware of. As a police department, we are getting busier and busier. Our patrol division, our detective division is increasingly more and more calls, more and more dedicated time, and stress levels continue to rise. So naturally, I hear from my, my troops that they feel like they need more manpower on that level. I recognize from the city's perspective that money is tight, and that is something that needs to be taken very seriously. So in my evaluation and looking at our needs as a police department, trying to make our department as efficient as we possibly can, and recognizing that to hire a police officer is very expensive. It's much more for retirement benefits and so forth and so on. So I thought about how can we increase the effectiveness of our officers, and in evaluating that, I've come up with the, basically the conclusion that I think if we had an office, better use of our office staff, and another position as a civilian office staff, which would not be as, as intensive as an actual police officer, that by doing so, we can make our officers more efficient, give them more time to be cops, to do police work versus administrative work. I have a detective sergeant now that's handling our evidence room, which is a time-intensive situation, and so that's my focus. That's been my drive and my focus, is to try to come up a way to help my cops be out on the road instead of in the office doing reports as much as possible. That's, that's never going to go away, but to try to help them be more efficient. And so in my, originally, this was proposed as a full-time position. I've looked at Amanda Henderson, one of our office staff right now. I think by doing some, a little bit of adjustments, that we can have her pick up some of the load that I'm talking about, and dial back my request for a full-time and move that to a part-time where it'd be a twenty to thirty-hour-a-week situation, excuse me. So there would be basically three main pillars that this individual would be used in. One would be as a evidence technician, so I can get my, my detective sergeant out of there. Emergency management would be another one. So I'm the emergency, emergency management director in my position as the chief. I've found that I've had to back off on what I've done, what I used to do in that area, and there's been a decrease in the amount of work that's being done in emergency management. Some of that has to do with the emergency management preparedness grant that we have that the state has, and it just allows me to function in some areas there, because I'm a department head now, and so under the guidelines, I can't, I'm not eligible to be the guy to manage a lot of these things that are, that fall under that grant. So I've moved that over to Debbie Olson, and she is completely overwhelmed. She's a part-time individual who works for us, and we've dumped a lot of stuff on her, and so she is completely way over the top, overwhelmed. I want to pull back on some of the things that she's doing. I'd like to take this part-time position, give them the evidence room, give them more of emergency management. I mean, it's still going to be a shared task between myself, this new person, Debbie Olson, and then also within our, our staff, Bruce Cox, Steve Thacker, and so forth. So, but I do want to see, I don't want to see us lose momentum that we've been gaining in that particular area. And then the other, the other area is, again, going to support for general police purposes, and one of them would be training. I have an officer who's a training officer right now. He's assigned as our training officer. I want to free him, that time up that he spends doing that particular job, and give it to this individual. And then there's some other ancillary things that we, that I'd like to also give this person as they have time, but those are kind of the three main things that I'm, that I'm looking at.
Thank you, Chief. I, I think, I hope the council shares my view that, thank you for your efforts to try to figure out how to be most efficient. Thank you for your efforts to try to figure out how to be most efficient and, and cost-effective. We appreciate the, the great work that the police department does. And I think this is a great way to move forward with this, with this civilian position.
Thank you, Mayor.
My only question on this position relative to handling evidence, do what kind of custodian training do they need to maintain forensic viability, chain of custody type issues?
Yeah, so obviously that's going to be a major concern in the hiring process to see if they've got some kind of training or experience in that area. Either, either or, or both, emergency management, training and experience in emergency management, or law enforcement, evidence handling. We can train in one or the other, but I'd like to have someone who's got either good extra education and background in emergency management and train them up on evidence, or they've got good law enforcement background and we can train them up on emergency management. Ideally, both would be nice. But yeah, there are, there's nationally accredited programs that we can send them through training for as an evidence custodian. They would have to, to receive a fair amount of training in that area. The detective sergeant would still be over the evidence room. He would still monitor it and make sure it's being done properly, but that is a high liability area and it's a very important area. So yeah, we would definitely do the training.
I assume that when you say that they would be in charge of some training, that that would not diminish the opportunity for Officer Barnes to do some trickle down of the training he's getting through the SWAT team?
Oh, no, no, yeah, absolutely not. So the training officer just coordinates, finds training, makes sure, gets officers signed up for classes, figures out how much the cost is, does the logistical stuff about all the training.
Okay, that's a good clarification. I appreciate that.
I'm very impressed also that you're able to cut back, and I think you've done way more than we could have asked, so I'm very much in favor for it.
Yeah, and at the very least, it can be a test run and you can feel it out. And then if it's enough hours, great. If not, we can go from there.
So in terms of how we move forward, it sounds like the council's in agreement to have, let the chief proceed with, with bringing a civilian in, in this part-time position with the role as outlined.
One of the discussions we were having during the budget timeframe was, is this a retired law enforcement person versus someone else?
With a lower benefits cost to the city.
So where are you on that?
As far as who this person would be, you know, I'm open to qualified individuals. A retired law enforcement officer would work great, I think. I have an individual right now who is interested in it that just got their degree in emergency management. You know, I'd be open to take a look at that. So that's, that could be a challenge, trying to find someone that's willing to work part-time and, and do the type of technical work that this will require. But I'm pretty confident that we can, we can find someone. I know other agencies do use part-timers for their evidence room, which Cross does. And, but they, it's a, it's a person who's already been trained up in that. And so it's, it may be a challenge to find this person, but you know, we'll, we'll give it a good shot.
I guess I would look for a motion to authorize the chief to proceed with, with hiring a civilian in the police department for the purposes outlined.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speed detection sign, you have it on there?
Yes.
Anything you want to...
Yes.
...talk to us about that?
We have done, we have had the speed signs up for some time now on Fourth West, and then we moved one of them over to Chase Lane. We did some data collection on it. The speed signs can be turned off to where they're not displaying an actual speed, and you can still gather data on how, how fast traffic is going. I'm a little suspect of the data because specifically on Chase Lane, where the sign was placed...
It was above 14.
It needs to be further west. And that, that was actually my request to put it further west, but when they put it up, they, it ended up where it's at. So people are slowing down to make that, that corner, and I think it skews my averages. I'm, I don't trust the averages that are being shown on my data. And there was a, there was a glitch that we had as far as there was only a week that we had the sign off to test to see if there was an impact, sign on versus sign off. And so the, the, what the data is showing right now is that it's negligible. The impact is only like one mile an hour difference when it's on and when it's off. And I kind of suspect that that's not completely accurate. I think that there is a, an impact when you first put the sign up for a period of, you know, you put it up in a new area, and I think it has an impact for a few weeks, and then that impact kind of tapers off. So I think it's important for us to move the signs around. I, I gave this question to my staff today in staff meeting, how they felt about it. My two patrol sergeants, lieutenant, and then detective sergeant, all of them felt like it was a good investment to have. I feel that way too. I like the signs. I think they're, I think they're effective. They do turn off the, so the digital reading turns off if they go over 40 miles an hour. That's how we have it set. So it's not like someone can be looking at the sign and saying, oh, let's see how fast I can go and make it go higher and, you know, do that.
And you can program that so it's 50 or 60 or whatever.
Right. The other thing that's nice about these signs is it gives us data. We can monitor traffic. We can see how many cars are going down the road. We can see, get the averages, what the 85th percentile is, what the top speeds are, what the low speeds are. So it's, it's a nice device that way. So I would recommend moving forward on that myself.
And I think we, what we had in the budget was another sign plus an extra battery so that it's easier to swap them out. Is that right?
The, and the budget would have been a solar application, so we're not constantly having to charge the batteries. That's a, that's a draw on the public works department. They're having to go and pull the batteries and, and charge them up every week or so, so...
So is the council okay with the chief proceeding with that?
Yeah, we already had that in the budget, right?
We had it in the budget, but we said...
I'm fine with it.
We wanted to discuss it first. Okay, great.
Okay. Well, Paul's here, if I may. I don't know how much of the last discussion, or the last two hours, three hours discussion you heard. As part of this discussion of, of Main Street, I think there needs to be some discussion of crosswalk safety citywide. In conversations with Robin, we have, there's problems, there's problems for the crossing guards, but there's obviously more problems than I had ever realized were out there just generally speaking. So I'm, I'm not, I guess, understand that I would like to see something happen and you might start thinking about it.
Well, first off, the mayor brought this up a month or so ago, I think. And Kenny Williams and I, we took an assessment of every crosswalk in the city and the signage. And we're deficient in, in certain areas. Our signs are deficient. And so he's made an order for more signs, and we're working on getting those so that we're up to standard, we're up to the, the minimum standards that the NHTSA puts on us. So that's in progress. And then I've asked for another crosswalk up here on Fourth East for our SNAP plan, our school safety plan for Centerville Junior at Porter Lane. But some of the comments that were made tonight, as far as flashing lights and stuff, that's something that can be considered going on.
Yeah, that was one of the, the items. I was thinking the same thing. It was, the plan itself is very, very complicated in terms of what makes sense and what's going to work for everybody. Crosswalks and crosswalk safety was absolutely a no-brainer. That's something that anyone can get behind, and that I don't think there's going to be any lack of public support for it. It's just how soon can we get the right elements in play?
And that's been a huge concern of mine as well.
So I wonder if we could direct staff then to do some research on different options that are available and how mu, and their cost, and then see if we want to act on any of those immediately.
I think it might be a good help to use this speed sign that we're getting to put up.
Now, one thing we do need to remember is Main Street is a state highway. It's a state road. And so any sign that goes on there, anything that happens on that road has to be...
We have crosswalks that aren't on Main Street that, I just think would be interesting for people to see that sign and realize...
Plus, I think the problem is, is that some people naturally actually drive slower than 40, and that they might be reminded they can go faster. Because that's such a high-speed limit.
No, it doesn't tell them they can go 40. It just doesn't go over 40.
I know.
You can, you can set it, so it's...
You can set it. I'm just saying it would be interesting, people would be surprised how fast they're going or that they need to be slowed down.
I, I drive, you know, Main Street and Farmington frequently, and every time I, I notice and that the electronic sign there makes me slow down along 200 East.
Yeah, that's what I think. I think it would help people slow down.
It would help in Centerville because you are already going slow. But it probably helps.
Well, it's, it's, it's right where they change the speed limit from 40 to 30, but... I, I would, I'm happy to work with Steve and write a letter to our friends in U dot region one to say, look, we're going to be looking at, at crosswalks on Main Street. We want your help this, on this. If, if, if you and Kenny are willing to, you know, give us some professional advice so that, so that we have some professionals making decisions, that would be helpful.
We can do that.
Several people today mentioned the infamous flags from Salt Lake. I personally think they are a waste, but there are obviously some people who think that they are beneficial. I don't know what, Paul, what you think, what your officers think.
We have them in one spot, don't we?
Yeah, we, we've had them on Chase Lane and Fourth West, and then again, over here on Porter Lane and Fourth West. Do we have them anywhere else? I'm trying to think.
I think they, they had some up by Reading Elementary as well at one time, but I'm not sure if they're still there.
Okay. I've actually been kind of surprised that the flags have actually stuck around as much as they have. I figured they'd, I figured they'd be on people's boats, yeah. But...
They're red, not orange.
I, I think that they are a good thing to have. On some of these intersections, especially where there's a lot of kids crossing and there's a lot of traffic, Chase Lane and Fourth West is, I think is a good example, and Porter Lane. But Chase Lane and Fourth West is on our SNAP plan. It is a route, designated route for the kids to get to school. And it's a, it's a busy intersection, and I think it does enhance their safety if they're holding a flag. And I've, I watch them use it. They, the flags migrate from the west side to the east side on, in the mornings, and they migrate from the east side to the west side in the afternoon, so.
I think they're beneficial.
Yeah.
Especially for the kids. I think that, you know, it does cause people to kind of, if they look up from texting long enough to see the flag, it helps. I don't usually, they don't usually do that to see the crossing guard, but if they do to see the, that, that's the number one problem.
You already got a sign.
Is, is, is texting. And I can tell you, I have people drive right by me this far away texting, and they don't even ever know they did. I mean, I can look down and see their phones.
Just reach out and knock on their windows.
You're going to authorize crossing guards to write tickets?
He gets mad at me when I do that. Thank you.
I kind of want to give you a bowling ball.
Be careful. We're, we're, we have to be careful about crossing guards being too...
Too aggressive.
Too aggressive with cars.
All right, so...
Trouble the other way.
I, I'm happy to, to work with the chief, and, and if Randy's willing to let Kenny work with us on, on looking at these crosswalks some more and getting U dot to, to look at what improvements we could make.
Yeah, if we can get U dot to look at some sort of fast turn based on community need and feedback, whatever, they're willing to do quickly, I would be interested in that. I definitely think that's the easiest thing we can do relative to Main Street right now. And most effective.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, let's go back to item number three, which is radio read meters. We're in the, we're in the 21st century.
Yes, we're looking at trying to automate a little bit with our meter reading, doing the commercial reads. And what it basically is, is putting this meter, radio read, and we just plug, right now, we're using a touch read. And you touch the top of this on the meter box, and you walk to it and it reads it. And in the wintertime, we read both the commercial and the, just the commercials. We don't do the residential. But alls you do to change it to a radio is plug this into it, put this on the lid, and then we can read.
So that's on the lid, it's not on the meter?
Yes, the meter's here. This cord goes down to it now, and alls we do is take this off the lid and plug it into here, and then hook, attach this to the top of the meter. And then we would be able to drive around and read it with the wand, and it would send out the read. This would send out the read, and you'd pick it up as you drive by. If we ever go to a larger system, you have a radio base with an antenna, and it shoots out, and it picks it up. You can pick it up daily, or you can pick it up once a month or whatever. We do not read, excuse me, our residential meters year-round because of the snow, but we do do our commercial reads, and we would like to try, do a test section. We're, very, very few have won the cities that has not done radio read. Most cities have done it. We don't spend a lot of money doing our reading. From a cost standpoint, it's probably not cost-effective, but the, there's some benefits by doing it, so we don't have to clear snow in the wintertime and some of those kind of things. And we'd like to try, this is a test section, see how we like it, see how it works. And we'd be doing all of the commercial meters with this, $40,000 basically, so...
Randy, I didn't see and hear where there was an estimate of how long the...
20 years.
The battery lasts.
20 years is the battery life.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
It's, and that's one of the things that we've done, is we've held off on doing it. The first generations were 10-year. They had a 10-year guarantee, and these are 20 years.
Even in a Utah winter, hot and cold?
Yep, hot and cold.
I need one of those for my iPhone.
Yeah. I'm amazed that they will last that long.
If you're sending one number a week, you can have that.
I want to tell you too, though, if you, some cities are using these and pulling them more often. They won't last that long. If you pull them more often, they'll die. Some cities are calling people up and saying, you've got a water leak in your house. We've been watching how much water you've been using, and your meters can do that. They can actually call out and tell you that your water's been running continuously, and they can pull out to the, the RTUs and tell them that there's a leak in your house. So that is the technology, the technology's there. It's a question of whether we want to get that sophisticated. And some people even complain that that's too much sophisticated and being into your life and knowing how much water you're using, when you're using it. Weber Basin, by the way, are using these on all of their installations they're doing for Weber Basin, and they're sending the bills to the citizens every month. And it's reduced the amount of water people are consuming because they compare it against how much water they should be using, but they take it every month and send it to them. But they don't send a bill associated with the cost, but the people have reduced considerably by doing that. Someday, they will come to the city and do that within the city limits, so, within the...
Any further questions for Randy? The staff recommendation here is to approve the purpose, purchase of radio read equipment for commercial water meters from Mountainland in the amount of $44,939.
Motion to approve the purchase of radio equipment for the commercial meeting of the water from a Mountainland in the amount of $44,939.
Is there a second? Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. I think this is a good way to, to experiment and, and see if this is something we would do on, on a wider basis.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be a good experiment to see.
And I'd really love to, to see some data, how much staff reduction time is there? And I'd love to, you know, send, send our, I believe Weber Basin does this via email, so it doesn't cost them much as they send the report out.
Yeah, they do.
As often as the, the customer can kind of sign up and say how, how often they want this, this information.
Yeah, the technology is really changing. It's becoming more and more useful. They're doing it through cell coverage now with some of them. Ours would still be a radio base, but, so...
Randy, I second the idea of what the mayor just said, that it would be really great to get data back as far as how much you think it's saving you in, in staff time. How long do you think is it an appropriate time to give before we could be able to measure that in a reasonable way?
I think we'd want to do a year, probably after a year, go through our years and see how much time it takes. Because we definitely have to go through a winter, because during the wintertime, we have to go out and dig them up in order to read them, and we won't have to do that now. And some of the meters that we'll be putting them on will be in homes as well. Not homes, but inside of the commercial buildings. So it'll be better from that standpoint as well.
A question, Randy. So we have the meter reader in the summer. Is it the water crew or whatever that's reading them?
The meter reader comes and does it in the winter as well.
In the winters too? Okay.
But they'd be able to do it so much faster, they'd be able to just drive the car by the meters, they would pull, and they would be done probably in a half hour, an hour or something like that. But still, it's definitely not going to be as cost-effective as the cost of it. There's no question. When you look at doing the entire city, we're ta, talking... When you look at doing the entire city, we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the entire city. So it's a lot of money. And we do have it in our long-range plan to do this. We don't know what year we're planning on doing it, but right now, it's not in our plan in the first five years, so. But we thought we'd try this, see how it works out. So this is more costly to us to do the commercial reads, so. And we want the commercial people to be able to have the information sooner. So during this winter, for example, the stores that may be irrigating in the winter, like down at the Walmart, for example, they'll know how much water they've used. And if they've got problems, they can take care of it, so that's our intent.
Okay? Thank you very much. While we have you here, any comment on the, on the tree chipper in the staff report? It's, this is officially a Parks Department purchase, but the Public Works was supportive of that for trimming.
Yeah, we're actually doing the purchasing of it, but, but both of us are going to use it, so.
Great.
So we've already ordered it up and ready to go. It's, it'll be here as, as quick as you guys, as quick as we get it approved, it'll be. They've got one in stock, so.
All right, but they, you, you've not made the purchase and delivered it before it was authorized, correct?
No, it has not been delivered, ma'am.
I seen him using it yesterday.
No, we haven't got it yet. But we will, it is, it is, it's been ordered as far as getting one here. They didn't have one, they've got it here, so if it's approved, we'll get it.
Great, thank you. Mayor's report is next on the agenda.
Mayor, we need to still review the minutes.
We do. I was going to handle that in the miscellaneous business. I'll make this brief. We had a great Fourth of July debrief, which I think we, we need to do every year. It was, it was really useful with the existing committee. And we had our, our chair for 2017, Laura Tony. Laura and Duane Tony have agreed to be the chairs. They did the breakfast one year ago. And Laura's on our Whittaker Museum Board. They're very generous in that. We had a good discussion about a number of things. We're going to make improvements, better handicapped access, better access in the park. I believe that they'll come back and with the suggestion to try to move the, have the parade go south to north and do the staging on Page's Lane. But that they'll, they'll come and make that presentation. Steven, Chris Green will make a presentation next council meeting on the Fourth of July. And hopefully Laura will, will be here to listen to that. So that was great. Reminder of the fire service area public hearing, truth and taxation hearing on August tenth. If you're interested in that, so far, we haven't had any opposition, so everything's moving forward. And then if, if you have time to volunteer to help out city staff on Friday for the tour of Utah, that would be appreciated.
The community corps has about a dozen people.
Oh, great.
Signed up to help.
Fantastic. A great way we can, we show a lot of support for our cyclists, and hopefully they'll appreciate that.
They come whizzing through and don't have an idea where they are.
Well, even those who are spectators, hopefully, will appreciate that. They'll know where they are. We're, we're the city that has all the American flags up. We've got scouts, we've got scouts putting them on Page's Lane so that they'll be throughout the whole city. So they, that's a neat thing. And then as soon as the race is over next week, we'll, the crews will take down the flags. City managers' report. Jake, given the hour, I might suggest that we move the operational metrics discussion to a future meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I just have one thing on the schedule. There's the September sixth work session and the October fourth work session. We need to swap those two mainly because the Parks and Rec Committee will only have a chance to meet once, and they won't have the numbers from Kevin about the park expansion by the, by this, by this August meeting. So they need the September meeting to review that with.
So which two are we swapping again?
So we're talking September sixth, we were going to meet with the Parks and Rec Committee. And October fourth was going to be with Public Works.
October.
The October fourth, so we're just going to swap those two.
And, and we may, I'll talk to Steve, you know, maybe we try to move and, and take care of the Main Street work session that day, or, or actually, come to think of it, I think I'd prefer to do it on a day when we're not constrained by shortening, you know, by an hour work session when we have a city council we have to start. I, I think it might be better to, to meet on a day where we could extend it if needed, to listen to property owners.
We're all for having extra meetings.
You like extra meetings, right?
Great.
You guys don't get paid by the meeting?
Yeah, doubles our pay, right?
Not exactly. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Under miscellaneous business, we have the purchase of the Vermeer tree chipper. And we've been borrowing a tree chipper from Woods Cross, which I thought was a great move, and I appreciate that. Given the likelihood that we're going to continue to have windstorms and other events, you know, maybe it is time to get our own tree chipper. Certainly, the, the Parks and Public Works departments think, think that that's, that we should do that. Any questions on that? If not, I would, I would look for a motion to approve the purchase of a tree chipper from Vermeer Rocky Mountain in the amount of thirty-six thousand three twenty-nine forty.
Is it viable to request that either Parks or Public Works set up someplace that they could allow homeowners to drop off trees? And that they, they have taken out and they're having a hard time getting rid of?
I mean, right now, we can, you can take them to green waste, to landfill. I, I've wondered about the possibility of, of allowing citizens to rent this. Because the, the, the value of a tree chipper is you, you take it to where the tree is and chop it up there, and then you don't have to transport the tree. Because the problem is transporting the tree. If you're willing to transport it, then there's lots of people who, you know, you can take it to the, the Bountiful landfill, and for five bucks, three bucks, they'll take care of it. But you, you've got to transport it. And, but if we have the tree chipper, then it can be done on site and compacted in space. But you wonder, is there, that's a very expensive piece of equipment to not be using all the time.
I just wanted to say, say the word rental again, and I wanted to watch Lisa this time to see what, what she'd do.
Her face was fabulous.
The liability there was, good to see.
And I think you'll want the Parks and Rec director to, to weigh in on that, but.
I, I think it's worth having a discussion. Is there, is there a way to make better use of it?
I mean, they're very dangerous machinery, and you probably have to be trained on it. And that would be my concern, renting it out.
How about hiring, could you pay a fee?
Could we pay Parks and Recs? So, so could I, for example, pay twenty-five bucks to have them come by and chip a tree at my house?
Are we suggesting that the city staff moonlight on there?
We have private companies that do this, so.
I think you found a way to finance the tree chipper right there.
It was a thought. I apologize. I withdraw.
This has some problems.
I can understand that you can't let people use it, that, that, it is a dangerous piece of equipment. And you're right, if you're going to put it in your truck and take it to the city, then you may as well take it to the landfill or to the, to Bountiful, so maybe it's a.
But, but, you know, maybe you have it a couple of times a year, like we have the green cleanup where you bring it to someplace close. We could think about, you know, maybe some neighborhood locations. I think it's worth having a conversation with, with, with Bruce and Randy about it.
Yeah, anything that incentivizes people to, to get the underbrush and everything else out. I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of that.
We could have Kyle host a, a street dance and bring, bring your trees and get it all done at once. Christmas tree burning. All right, these meetings are being recorded. So I'm, I'm hoping for a, a motion to approve the purchase of the tree chipper.
I would move that we approve the purchase of the Vermeer tree chipper for thirty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion?
My further discussion is just that I know a tree chipper is needed, but I would hope that we don't just only want to then chop down and chip the trees, that we also will eventually buy equipment to help us easily plant trees.
A tree planter with a tree chipper? Thank you for that comment. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Minutes that we did not cover. Minutes for a council meeting that's, has many of you as important as always a challenge. Are there any changes to recommend for the meet? We have two meeting, two sets of meeting minutes. Let's approach them one at a time. The July nineteenth work session that was held with the Planning Commission. Are there any recommended changes to, to that set of meeting minutes?
I have a couple on those. Starting on the second page thirty-five is a paragraph about what I said. But I do know for a fact that I stated at the beginning of that statement that I was speaking to Stephanie's point. And Stephanie's point had been a statement that this is and has been a high-speed corridor and should stay as such. Do you remember making that?
I don't believe I said should stay as such, but I did say that it was, that it was a through street rather than a destination.
Is there a suggested language that you would like to?
Yeah, so I would just, before my paragraph starts, so, you know, approximately line thirty-four, that Councilwoman Ivy stated that this highway has been and is a high-speed through corridor.
You okay with that? I didn't say high speed. I did not say high speed, but I did say it was a through street, not a destination.
A well-trafficed, I don't remember the words you used, but it was something like that.
I don't remember either, but I know I didn't say high speed.
I just clearly remember that I was speaking to the point of high speed, and so I don't know if, could you?
So what about speaking to the point of, if you said, speaking to the point of Main Street being a heavily trafficked corridor, Council and Fillmore stated?
Sure, so we'll just state that Stephanie made a statement that it's a through corridor. So are you comfortable with that? And then, and then I'll say at the beginning of that paragraph, Councilwoman Fillmore, in response to Stephanie's point of it being a, what, because I interpreted what she said as high speed. So I'll put that in my interpretation.
Well, don't say that I said it, because I didn't say high speed, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Fillmore, in response to Councilwoman Ivy's point about how this corridor is used, comma. And then the one other thing that I felt was missing that I thought was substantive was in, in Councilwoman Meacham's comments, there was actually lengthy discussion about your concern about the bike lane, the new striping that U dot had already done. You told us all about how you had driven it with Randy Randall and that you felt that the bikers would go right up to the white line and it would create.
I didn't say that I felt like it. I said that Randy had taken me and he had worries about the striping. I had no opinion on it because I was just telling them that I had been driven up there and shown.
I clearly remember you saying, I'm worried it's going to cause a head-on collision. And then it made you feel nervous and scared, and you thought it was problematic.
No, I don't think I said I was nervous and scared. I said Randy took me up there to show me how close it would be, and the, the lines were out pretty far and that it could allow bicyclists to be.
I just feel that that was substantive, because it was a part of the, it was that in combination with the later bike conversation that gave me the impression, and I thought staff the impression, that this court, this South End needed council approval that had not yet been given to continue with the striping that existed.
I certainly didn't feel that way.
So somebody can suggest specific language, or you could ask.
I'll ask for that section that.
Katie to, to.
Yeah, I'll ask for the section that Councilwoman Meacham spoke.
Look at that and provide something to, to look at specifically. What, what, is the council okay asking Katie to look at that?
And what is that?
Come back again?
Starting on forty-four, there was, that's when Robin took a chance to make numerous points. I'm not sure of the order, if she said it in that same time where she was showing pictures of Parish Lane. But I think there were some substantive points that she was trying to make that are important to have in the record. So the, the concern about the painting lines. Mm-hmm, and then she, she did say that she talked to property owners. And then she also showed visuals and explained her concerns about Main Street being like Parish Lane. Those are the things that I felt were substantive.
So I would suggest, are there any of the changes to these minutes, the work sessions?
That's all I have.
If not, I'd suggest the council table these and ask.
I'd say we table that pending a transcript of the sections that Councilwoman Fillmore is concerned about.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Move in second that we table the work session minutes and ask our very capable recording secretary to, to relook at that and, and provide a transcript summary to, to look at.
Yeah, of the, of the areas, not the, not the whole thing.
Not the whole thing, just of that specific comment about white stripes.
That one and the other one, or just that one?
Striping and.
If she can hear the other one, that would be great, just to check.
So on what, what Councilwoman Ivy stated on Main Street, that area as well as, so the start of line thirty-five and the start of line forty-four.
I, I don't know we need that. I think you agreed on language for the first one. I would just do the, the one relative to the bike striping. We don't need to hunt through the whole thing if you've already agreed on language.
It's fine with me.
Are you asking for a perbatim transcript of the conversation that she mentioned the ride with Randy?
I'd prefer.
Am I clear on where I'm at?
Yeah, I'd prefer a summary like we do for the rest.
Not in the minutes, but I think they're saying, look, give us a transcript, and then we can decide what to put in the minutes.
I, I would recommend we ask Katie to, to put, put a summary together so that.
I'm glad for Katie to put a summary together.
Consistent.
And I'm fine with that. I just felt that it was missing substantive. She, she had planned points to make.
As such, that it'd be a summary of, of the, the conversation.
Yeah, summary is fine, but she had planned points to make that I felt were important enough that she had planned them.
So we have a motion and a second to table these minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Onto the regular meeting minutes. Any suggested changes?
I would like to suggest a change on page four. Line thirty-one, where it says Mayor Cutler, referring to the newsletter item you were going to ask Steve to do. I've got this written out to give Katie, but I would like to have it say, Mayor Cutler directed Steve Thacker to write an article about bike lanes, cyclists, and how they interact, how they interact, and how drivers should deal with aggressive cyclists. Bill Entz flippantly commented, like run them off the road. Stephanie tells me that there is precedent for having a note or an addendum in minutes. And I would like to say that Bill Entz regrets that flippant reaction and has requested inserting the following comment. Honestly, I have no recollection of the statement. When the first person came to me complaining about it, I totally denied it. I then attempted to find it on the recording, but could not. However, since then, the YouTube video has become available, and I can see my FUPA and cannot deny it. I regret, regret the comment and apologize to anyone who felt it was anything but a flippant comment. It is by no means a joking matter. I in no way believe or endorse what may have been implied. It's my view that we need to be considerate of those around us on, on the road. Cyclists, pedestrians, and cars, even if we think they are violating what we think is our space or our turn, because the impact of not doing so is so disastrous. I know that's a special request. I know it's been done before.
I, I don't remember the editorial comments before, but can you think of a, this specific case?
I can. It was in the most recent meeting with the museum board when City Manager Thacker had a specific language that he wanted added to the museum board minutes that were not part of the, the.
So it wasn't a city council meeting minutes, it was museum board minutes?
It was the museum board minutes, and they opted that, since that wasn't actually part of the discussion, they would put a little asterisk and say, the city manager asked for this clarification to be added after the fact.
My, my preference would be not to have any of that comment in there and not to ever talk about it again.
It would be my preference not to ever talk about it again, but everybody's talking about it. And I guess I would like it very clear that.
Well, procedurally, we could throw it in on the next minutes that you commented on this previous minutes.
That's a good idea.
I like that.
I really like that, yeah. I'm, I'm concerned trying to add editorial comments to minutes, because I think it's a very slippery slope. And, and, I, I mean, under the statute, they really are just a summary. And there are some provisions that a council member can request to have something put in, but it is to reflect what occurred that evening. So I think that's a great solution, if you're, if that's acceptable.
So could you provide that language, and Katie could just put that in? So could you provide that language, and Katie could just put that in this meeting's minutes?
In this meeting's minutes, I will do that.
What about the first sentence?
They're suggesting, I will edit this a little bit, so it'll all go into the new one, not the old one.
So we don't need to make any changes to the old one?
YouTube doesn't forget anything, so...
But to that point, though, I did feel like, again, there is...
Unless you don't record it.
To that point, I did feel there, again, was just a little bit of a substantive piece missing, and that is what led Mayor Cutler to make a statement about including safety in the newspaper was Councilman Entz's few sentences about being frustrated with bikers.
No, what led me, I brought that up on my own, because I brought it up, I thought it was, I thought that I brought it up during the mayor's report, but I guess I brought it up then, it was a...
You brought it up directly after Councilman Entz had made a few sentences worth of statement about his frustration. Then you were saying, "I've heard that before, people have suggested newsletter article." I don't think we need record of the exact flippant comment, but I think that the frustration expressed...
Paragraph there.
Right, so it would just be before your sentence, Mayor Cutler said he would like, I would say...
I don't think we need to assume what made the mayor say it, I think we're done and good.
A citizen had asked me before any of these comments to include that, so...
But regardless, that's the order of the conversation, and I just feel like it's...
So do you have a specific language you want to insert?
So are we trying to change a summary into intent? I think we're okay.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying at thirty-one, after the period of community, after community, to just say a summary. Councilman Entz expressed frustration with bikers and them taking liberty with their legal rights on the road.
So that's already up on line twenty-three?
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't see any reason to add it in.
Oh, then, see, I've been so busy that I had to just go through these really quick, so, never mind.
Okay, thanks. Any other modifications?
Last thing, and this is not for the minutes, to the extent that my gaffe caused us all problems, I apologize.
Apology accepted.
I'm sorry that you have to go through this, and it's the day and age that we live in, when everyone...
I was one of the ones that supported YouTube.
Yeah, we asked for transparency, boy, we got it, didn't we?
I thought, we received, I don't know if it's hundreds, but a large number of emails, but I liked the comment from Ann Fidel quoting the scripture in Proverbs that said, "Let's all try not to be offended." It's easy, I think, in this day and age to choose to take offense, and as we work together, let's try extra hard not to take offense to each other. I sincerely believe all of you and most of our citizens have good intentions. They express it differently, and sometimes we can choose to take offense, or we can choose not to take offense, and look for the better... Abraham Lincoln said, "Better angels of our nature," or something like that, that try to give people the benefit of the doubt. So...
I had one additional small change, very small. Page six. Line twenty-three, "Councilwoman Fillmore also noted visuals are needed and feedback should be obtained for any new proposed plans." So that wasn't saying from the Planning Commission, it was just saying, "If this council's going to start putting out the idea of new plans, we should get the kind of data that we got with the Planning Commission's plan."
So the change you're saying is, strike the words "Planning Commission"?
Right, strike the words "Planning..."
The end of twenty-three.
And insert what?
For any new ideas of plans.
Anyone have a problem with that?
So it would say, "Councilwoman Fillmore also noted visuals are needed and feedback should be obtained from the Planning Commission for any new proposed plans?"
No, she wants to strike from the Planning Commission.
Not from the Planning Commission, just, just that if we're going to throw out new plans, then the same kind of data...
Feedback should be obtained for any new plans.
Yeah, because I was talking about the time spent, so let's say, "Councilwoman Fillmore also noted also noted that the same level or a similar level of visuals are needed and feedback obtained for any new plans."
I like the stick figure visual, I thought it was quite good. It was about the amount of effort I wanted.
But that is what I said, and that's all I'm trying to curl.
Can you repeat that one more time, sorry?
"Councilwoman Fillmore also noted"
Get it slowly.
"that similar levels..."
Okay, hold on, you're changing it. Similar levels of...
And I wasn't, I was just using visuals as an example, but similar level of report and data are needed and feedback should be obtained for any new proposed plan.
If the council is amenable, I'd look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July nineteenth as amended?
I had one more question, and I'm sorry, I have been so inundated with the emails that I don't know where it is. I didn't, I don't remember reading the comment from our police chief about his concern about a bike lane on Parish Lane, and I want to make sure that that is...
It's captured in page four, right around line, it's line forty-eight is where he starts speaking about that. I think.
I know, I know he specifically said that he was concerned about Parish Lane, so I'd like that to reflect it.
Yeah, I went back and reviewed that, and he said personally speaking, so I don't think he was actually addressing it as the chief in that regard. He said personally speaking as a disclaimer on that.
Okay, all right then.
Because I was looking exactly for the same thing, and that's why I went back and reviewed that.
Is there a motion to approve minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that, we have one thing left on our agenda, and that is the need to go into a closed meeting to review our annual performance review for the city manager.
Motion to enter a closed meeting for purposes allowed by state law for the purposes of reviewing the performance of the city manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If it's all right, I'm going to cut the feed to YouTube at this point.
Yeah, I think we can...
We're done with any other official business?
Well, the only official business would be coming out of closed meetings to have a motion on...
Given the hour, I don't think anyone's going to tack on anything beyond that, so...
That can be captured in the written minutes.
Okay.